Meeting of the Folsom City Council on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Howell.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sheldon is absent this evening.
Okay, if everybody would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any agenda updates?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Okay, that brings us to business from the floor. This is the time when any member of the public can address the council on something that is not on the agenda. Please be aware that because it is not agendized, state law prohibits us from deliberating or taking action on it, but we are, of course, happy to hear your comments. I know we have a couple of people in the queue. If anybody else wants to speak to business from the floor or one of our agendized items, please fill out a blue speaker card, which is at that back table, and turn it into Ms. Howell over here. Krista, who do we have?
Okay, so this evening you have one request to speak under Business from the Floor, and that is Mark Moore.
Nobody on the phone for Business from the Floor.
Welcome, Mark.
Hello. How are you? Is it okay?
Yeah, mask on and as close to the mic as you can, please.
Thank you. So my name is Mark Moore, and actually earlier today, somebody asked me, they said, "What do I know about building a business and having it crumble from some sudden, unexpected problem?" And I say, "Well, I know a great deal about that, actually." I was a small business owner in the Bay Area for seven years, and my San Francisco location was decimated by the earthquake back in 89. So I lost a great deal through no fault of my own, of course, and that's real similar to what is going on right now with our businesses here. There's no denying that the COVID is a terrible thing and a big challenge to manage, but we've done well here in Folsom. We have about 40 active cases, very few deaths, and although life safety is always a priority and always should be, I believe that now we are at the point where economic safety should be considered just as relevant. I think that you, our city leadership, have done a great job, and I thank you for that. It's a very difficult task managing a very leaky ship when it comes to the impact to our businesses. Understandably, your hands have been tied by the state and by the county. While Sacramento County is rated at the very highest risk due to several cities and areas in the furthest western part of our county, Folsom itself is extremely low-risk on the opposite end of the spectrum. The process that groups us based on our county numbers and not our actual city numbers was created as a reaction to the pandemic and is not a longstanding, proven protocol. It was abruptly manufactured with the best intentions to primarily protect public health, but it should not be considered written in stone. Our COVID experience has evolved, so why shouldn't we evolve? I'm sorry. Okay, so why shouldn't we evolve on how we're going to handle it? The concern here in Folsom now isn't so much physical health emergency as much as an economical health emergency. So my request tonight would be for you, our city leadership, to stand up tall and loud in support of our business, leave no stone unturned in pursuing the ultimate goal of getting each and every business up and running safely. I know each of you, and I know this is in your heart, but to be clear, do it loudly and do it publicly so that there will be no Folsom resident who can doubt your devotion to the cause. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Please call the first item.
Okay, your first item this evening under scheduled presentations is a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming the month of September 2020 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Folsom. I believe we have Richard Montgomery here to receive the proclamation. Yes, come on down, please.
Probably a little unusual that I do this proclamation rather than asking Andy or Mike to do a prostate proclamation, but this is near and dear to my heart because my father died of metastatic prostate cancer in 2010, so I'm always happy to present this. This is a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming the month of September 2020 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Folsom, whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in men, and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates there will be 191,930 new cases of prostate cancer in the USA in 2020, resulting in an estimated 33,330 deaths, and whereas it is estimated 20,160 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and it is estimated 3,890 California men will die from this disease this year, and whereas early prostate cancer usually has no symptoms, and studies suggest strong familial predisposition may be responsible for 5% to 10% of the disease cases, and whereas the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 31% when it spreads to the other parts of the body, and whereas the rapid reduction in prostate cancer mortality is attributed to early detection through PSA testing and advancement in treatment, and whereas the City of Folsom joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their healthcare provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. Now therefore, I, Sarah Aquino, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Folsom to increase awareness about the importance of early detection and treatment of this disease, proclaim this eighth day of September 2020. It's hard to do that with a mask on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Aquino, and members of the council, and I guess in particular Krista and Lydia, who for, I guess I've been doing this for about 10 years, and I think the City of Folsom, this is maybe my seventh year, something like that. So it's greatly appreciated. Let me digress momentarily. There's a lot of facts and figures and wherethis, that type of thing. My bottom line is I've been working with prostate cancer patients for maybe 30 years now, and I'm probably 20 years past my diagnosis and my treatment. I didn't have a lot of choices 20 years ago. These days, men have a lot of choices, but the biggest thing men need to do is get tested early. For instance, I still get tested 20 years later. I get tested twice a year when I get my physical. The PSA test is 30 years old, but it's the only one we've got that gives you a shot at figuring out what's going on. So my recommendation is, you get a physical, you get tested. It's a very inexpensive blood test that goes right along with the rest of the tests that happen. It'll give you a clue that there have been so many changes in treatment. When I was diagnosed, it was radiation, which is a broad beam at the time, or surgery. At that time, it was an open surgery. We won't talk about the variations, but anyhow. And I've had a lot of men who have started testing and then quit, and unfortunately, prostate cancer in its early stages has no symptoms, so you don't know what's going on. If you get symptoms, it's kind of unfortunate, like the mayor's father, he's metastatic treatments, a lot of them, but that's the wrong time to catch it. So I guess, bottom line, I say, get tested, get tested regularly. I assume my position with prostate cancer is I'm in remission. I'm not cured. I get excited about doctors that say you're cured. I have seen men 10, 15, and 20 years later recur, so that's why I say, test, the cheap way out. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, your next item is a resolution of commendation honoring Vera Broder Silverstein for her donation of parkland to the City of Folsom, and we have tonight Stephen Blake to receive this resolution.
All right, this is a resolution of commendation honoring Vera Broder Silverstein for her donation of parkland to the City of Folsom, whereas the late Vera Broder Silverstein offered to dedicate to the City of Folsom a public park at the Harvest subdivision in Empire Ranch, totaling 4.7 acres, and whereas part of the terms and conditions of the Vera Silverstein Trust was to gift a portion of the Broder Ranch property to the City of Folsom for use as a public park, and whereas the Vera Silverstein Trust provided for the complete development of the property, and whereas the public park is to be developed to honor the pioneering and ranching life of the Broder family, early California pioneers, and Native American cultures of the Folsom area, and whereas the City Council named the park parcel the Broder Family Homestead Park, and whereas this passive park incorporates elements and interpretive signage that tell the story of the Broder family, or the Broder family's pioneering spirit, the history of the Natoma Ditch, and displays historic ranching relics, and whereas this park also provides new orchard and vineyard plantings, incorporates granite and stone from the original homestead into new park walls, preserves the historic olive grove, and provides an outdoor classroom space for the benefit of the Folsom community, and whereas this park beautifully contributes to Folsom's distinctive, by nature, collection of parks, trails, and open space. Now therefore, I, Sarah Aquino, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the Folsom community, do hereby extend commendation in the highest regard to the late Vera Broder Silverstein, passed and approved this eighth day of September 2020.
That was a pretty good story, and those of you who have been familiar with this project over the last six, eight years know that every good thing you said was somebody would disagree with at every level that we went through it, so it was quite a thing. I would like to say that I think I want to call attention to the really outstanding effort that the assistance of the Park and Recreation Department gave to this project, both of them, the most recent or past one and the incumbent. She adopted very quickly and recognized the value of this possible type of park and was instrumental in getting it finished. In addition, I want to say, you mentioned it, but maybe it was too polished, so I want to unpolish it a bit. It's true that the trust gave seven-plus acres to the city for the park. It's also true that the trust paid for its construction, or I should say, the first one and a half million, which was all it was supposed to cost, and the developer, homeowner, ticked in the excess, a couple hundred thousand dollars. I also want to say that the developer of this project, Lewis, we call it Lewis Development Co., when it started, they've changed their name a couple of times, but still it's the Lewis Companies, I think. I was a lawyer and did a lot of real estate work and so forth, so I had experience with these projects, and I thought that they were very professional, and I think they're very reliable and people you probably, a person would want to deal with. I don't mean to say they're pushovers, they are not, but I think we were fortunate that the trust was able to make the transaction that gave, whatever it is, this 40 acres remaining after the park was the wherewithal to pay for the park and many other things that were charitable and educational in nature. I think it's worth mentioning that the most important features of this park, I think, is its educational component, and you referred to it in the press with the proclamation, by the way. But I think it's worth mentioning that the educational aspects were, we tried to focus on, I don't want to say local, I want to say regional, and I don't want to say Folsom, City of Folsom, because this ranch was nowhere near Folsom when it started in the 1850s. I mean, the distance is still the same, but it was a half-day ride into town. Places like Mormon Island were much more closer and so on. Anyway, so it's local and regional interpretation of the experiences of the pioneers on that site and sites like it in this broader region. I tried to have some aspect that was material with respect to Native Americans' involvement with the property, but you know, there's no record, so I couldn't find anything to verify that the particular site was ever used for anything special. So I was left with nothing to say because no one, and I had to expert to do the research. Okay, so we wanted to highlight the natural history of the area, including what is now much of Folsom, but wasn't until modern days, and to create some appreciation for the achievements of those early pioneer Folsom area pioneers. I'd like to say that the interpretive signage that you mentioned and the photos and drawings that are posted on all weather, I would like to say permanent, but there may be some time that the Parks Department will ask you for money to replace or renew those signs, and I hope you'll come through with it because it's essential. The educational aspects of this park are not just signs, this is a such-and-such tree. They tell the story of this development of this area from the 1850s. So these signs were prepared in mind that by taking a walk and the signs are numbered, you don't have to go by the numbers, but if you do, you'll start at the beginning of the story and come out at the end. I recommend you do it that way. Also, I want to make the point that I think is not mentioned as much here, and because of the work and the expense of getting the thing approved and now constructed and in the hands, ownership of the city, there just wasn't as much time, and we were focusing on so many other things, but it is really part of the mission of this park to provide educational experiences. Now, and I don't know the extent to which you or your staff have had actual coordinating communications with the school district about it, but I have, and I guess I can say that, at least with respect to the elementary school, which is very nearly next door to this property, and intervening property between the school and this property is the sports park, and that they feel that this park can offer opportunities, particularly with respect to outdoor education and natural history and the history of the region. And these signs are, they were really expensive to get developed, by the way, so I want to manage to get every dime out of it. They tell the story. You can argue it doesn't tell the whole story. Well, there's only seven signs, and I think we did the best you could do, and I think it's representative, all the way from the vineyards that were pried there on that ranch. They failed because, as everybody probably knows, grapes couldn't survive because of the infestation of a particular little animal in the dirt at that time. It was only later they learned to transfer root stock that you could grow grapes around here. So, yeah, there were grapes there, but they didn't last very long. The other orchard trees, similarly, you could argue that there were never any of those particular fruits on that particular site. However, keep in mind that the Broder Ranch was over 300 acres, well, well over 300 acres at one part, one point, including land up in the Sierra, near Tahoe for summer pastures. So I think that the outdoor education aspects are served by some special benches and seating that you'll notice. If you weren't aware of why it's that way, you wouldn't notice it because it looks conveniently for a park visitor as well, and it is. But there's a special seating platform that does look a little different. Up right next to the site, actual site of the homestead, second home built on that homestead, we have a large platform. It's at an angle, and the idea is to allow someone to stand there and make a presentation to children or any other group, by the way, that would want to have a use of the park for something like that. It includes those benches I mentioned, that seating platform, and there's a secure electrical outlet. The idea is that only Parks Department and the school district, or at least the school next door, if not the school district itself, would have a key because there, I didn't think it was a good idea, and nobody in the Parks Department thought it was a good idea to have an electrical outlet that's just free and available in a public park, so I certainly agree with that. So I did obtain some input from the school district, and that's all I want to say. There are some things that the city and in particular Department of Parks and Recreation will need to do, and that would be pay some special attention to the things that are not yet done. The basic design of the park was to incorporate the topography and so forth a little better with a sports park than now exists. You'll notice if you go, if you walk through it, you notice there's one nice big walkway that kind of goes, stops. Well, in the future, it's hoped that some of those walkways would meander a little bit and create a more integrated space. The picnic areas, it's a covered area and it's got water, and that's also intended, hopefully, for community use, and I believe, don't know for sure, but I believe that Department Recreation should, or does, is the one who kind of coordinates the use of that to the extent somebody needs not privacy, but certainty of being available, kind of thing. So I think the biggest unfinished business of this park, of which I'll have nothing to do with because I spent all her money, is to continue the idea of integrating the sports park with this park and making sure that it is a community park. You know there's a locked gate access to the subdivision, not to the park, but once you're in the park, you can't get into the subdivision unless you've got a special key. Okay, fine, if people paid a lot of money, pardon me, thank you, paid a lot of money to own a house there, and they didn't want that, but it is a public park, and I hope that programmatically it is, becomes well-known and highly used by the public. There's plenty of parking there, and I know because the trust had to pay for a portion of it, even though it's not on the land. I think you should be proud of this park. I think you should be proud of the staff in your Park Department, Parks and Recreation, who at first skeptical, but quickly warmed to the idea, and were very helpful in promoting it. Good luck of having a very experienced and expert developer that, of the reputation, integrity, the one you happen to have. They're not all like that, and the patience that the city staff showed us when certain delays occurred in construction, I'm sure it didn't upset the city near as much as it did myself.
It's a beautiful park. I just want to thank you so much for all of your efforts and for Vera's donation of the land and the money to finally get this built, and I think you're probably aware that this project is much, much, much more than six years in the making. This probably goes back more than 25 years.
Yeah, well, this project went back to 2009.
Well, it goes back to well before I got elected to the city council because we had been hearing about this for a very long time, and Vera was adamant that the city would not have control of this property until after a certain formal council member was no longer with us.
You do know more about the story, don't you?
Yes, I do.
All that stuff out. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I could just take advantage of this little break, oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
Steve and I both neglected to point out where this park is actually located.
Because the neighbors don't want anybody to know where it is.
But you're familiar on East Natoma where golf course entrance is and where Empire Oaks Elementary School is. It's in the space between, and it's attached to McFarland Park where the little baseball field is, and if it doesn't end up becoming one of the more heavily utilized parks, I would be shocked because it literally has something for everyone, and at the very least, it's going to be a great place to take senior pictures if you have high schoolers. So thank you very, very much.
Mayor, if I could just ask, this is the city manager, Elaine Anderson, for anyone on the phone with us, if you could please mute your phones. We were getting a little feedback earlier, and it's kind of quieted down, but if you could just be sure you mute your phones if you're on the phone line. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Your next item is item number three. This is a presentation of 2020 Community Service Day. Communications Director Christine Brainard will make the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Director for the City of Folsom. I'm pleased to join my fellow steering committee members here tonight as we share our plans for the Seventh Annual Community Service Day. Folsom will be continuing its annual service day for the seventh year to serve the community while protecting the health and safety of our volunteers and our staff. Many volunteer opportunities are available to serve the community, including drive-through donation drives, at-home projects, and socially-distanced outdoor projects and at-home projects. Service Day will be held on Saturday, September 19th. We expect more than 1,200 volunteers to participate, and in fact, in the first 24 hours that we opened up the registration to the public, we had over 400 members of the community sign up. This is, remains Folsom's largest day of volunteerism. Projects include community cleanup projects, improvements in the historic district, beautification of the mirror house, citywide food drives, donation drives, and projects to benefit seniors, and many more. Like most events in 2020, Community Service Day will look a lot different this year. This year, our number one priority is protecting the health and safety of our community, so we're ensuring that social distancing is taking place at all projects. We consulted with the public health officer and received feedback and direction on how to make sure this is a safe volunteer opportunity for everyone. We'll be, instead of having a large community kickoff breakfast at Lakeside, this year we're going to be having three drive-through registration events where volunteers can drive through right outside of City Hall and collect their T-shirts, volunteer bags, and other project supplies. Every volunteer will receive PPE, including face masks. Every volunteer will receive PPE, including face masks, gloves, and hand sanitizer. And a big thank you to Dignity Health for providing face masks for all of the volunteers. Dignity has been our top sponsor and top supporter since the event started in 2014. We're so grateful for their support. And I'd like to introduce you to Michael Corpiol, Mercy Hospital Folsom President, to say a few words.
Thank you, Christine. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Michael Corpiol and it is my privilege to serve as the president of both Dignity Health, Mercy Hospital Folsom, and Mercy San Juan Medical Center. I know you're accustomed to seeing Randy Ross here, but a little over a month ago, Randy decided that it was time to retire right through this pandemic. How dare he? And he is really enjoying a much-deserved retirement away from healthcare and running a hospital. While the Mercy, where the Folsom community is really new to me, I have lived in this area for about four years now and my wife and I have thoroughly enjoyed spending time in Folsom and we have come to learn to know what you all have known for a long time, that Folsom is a great place to live, to work, and to play. I'm so excited about this opportunity to leave Mercy Folsom to ensure that the hospital continues to care for the Folsom community inside and outside our hospital walls, just as the Sisters of Mercy prescribed so many years ago. Mercy Hospital Folsom has proudly been the sponsor, the presenting sponsor of the Folsom Community Service Day since its inception seven years ago. And you may ask, why is this, why do we continue to support this event? Well, first and foremost, it is our mission to support the community and to be a good community partner. But more importantly, it is our home and we deeply care about it. Our physicians, our employees live and work here and we want to see it flourish. From caring for our community during a pandemic to supporting community events like Community Service Day, the Folsom Blues Half Marathon, Folsom Rodeo, and the Star Spangled Drive-In this past July, we are here and we will always be here to support our home and our community. In closing, I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words and to confirm our commitment to this event and this community, and I look forward to integrating into the community and meeting those of you who I haven't already met. So thank you very much.
We're very grateful for Dignity Health's sponsorship of our event and our many other sponsors. Together this year, through cash and in-kind sponsorships, we raised over $65,000. Every dollar goes towards the Community Service Day projects and events. We're grateful for our platinum sponsors at $10,000, gold at $5,000, silver at $2,500, and bronze at $1,000. So the projects help fund many of, or the sponsorship dollars found all of the projects, including the Neighbors Helping Seniors projects. And this year, more than 40 projects to help local seniors in need safely help them with projects such as gutter cleanouts or raking or other landscaping projects in their backyard. Those projects will be taking place in backyards throughout 40 households. And here with me tonight is our Steering Committee Chair, Justin Rathel, who will talk a little bit more about those projects.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having us this evening. So as we started this year, we started talking about, you know, how do we add more projects? How do we get more volunteers? How do we make Community Service Day bigger and better, which is the conversation we have every, every year as we start planning for Community Service Day. And what we realized, not knowing all of the changes that were going to happen before then and now, we really wanted to shift the focus to what were the most impactful projects because we were, we're getting to the limit where Community Service Day, we really couldn't figure out how we were going to make it any bigger than the previous year. So we were really talking about the most impactful projects that we wanted to do this year. So little did we know, that set us up for a Plan B very well as we transitioned over and started trying to look through our projects and figure out which ones we could do outside, which ones we could do with social distancing. And Neighbors Helping Seniors is one of those ones that has risen to the top, that we can do and that is very, very much needed. We have more applications this year than ever before. Right now, we are in need of folks to go out. We're having single-family units, one family go out and help one senior home in order to be able to do this with the safety precautions in mind. So normally, our team leads do four houses, three to four houses on that Saturday, so they're able to coordinate multiple teams. But we can't do that this year. So we're in need of people with skills to, and some, some physical strength to get out there, clean gutters, set pavers, rake leaves, trim trees, all these things to get the seniors ready for the winter season. So a lot of these folks haven't been able to get the help they need going in, so we think that's really the reason why we have the increase in applications this year. So I do encourage you to go out and encourage your friends and all of our residents to go out and basically adopt a senior coming in for Neighbors Helping Seniors this year. We could really use the assistance. Thanks so much.
Okay, so our largest project again this year is going to be the Citywide Food Drive. And this is an event that we had to completely start from scratch because the last model didn't work under the new COVID-19 restrictions. So this year, we're going to be hosting over a dozen drive-through Stop, Pop, and Go food drives. They're touchless drive-through food drives that will allow volunteers to safely donate food to community members in need. So tonight, Lisa Tudor with the Twin Lakes Food Bank and Mark Behuth with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints are going to say a couple of words about their project.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening. I want to, first of all, say thank you to the City Council, the City of Folsom, for agreeing to allow Community Service Day to continue. I know there was a lot of time and effort, hard conversations that went into it. And I think that in a time where people are feeling very disconnected, feeling weary, feeling powerless, this service event is, no, you know, I know this is tongue-in-cheek, but really it is a breath of fresh air, giving Folsom residents the ability to connect and to offer help and hope to people that are in need in our community. And I also, this is my first opportunity in the, in the chamber halls, to say thank you to the city for its ongoing support. Not, as Christine mentioned, this isn't the first year we've been doing this. It's seven years. And it's been seven years of successful food drives. And over the years, we've consistently received over 50,000 pounds of food from this community, which translate that into how does that, how does it impact our clients? That's feeding our clients anywhere from six to eight months out of the year. That is significant. And I, I work with my counterparts in Sacramento County, other food bank leaders who, they wouldn't say they're jealous, but we have a very, very supportive and gracious community. So I wanted to say thank you for that. So yes, we are looking forward to a part two, if you will, of the Stop, Pop, and Go. Again, through the support of the city, when the need became known that yes, we went, we had no idea in the month of March, as we were preparing for serving approximately 1,600 clients that month, we weren't prepared and nobody could have convinced me, what, we're going to serve over 2,000? It was close to 2,100 individuals for that month. That demand increased immediately and we anticipate that increase to continue. We realize this is a, is a marathon, it's not a sprint. And with that 50% increase in demand, we, we were struck with a challenge. How do we continue to adequately feed our neighbors in need? And so with the Stop, Pop, and Go food drive that implemented a drive-through model, it was extremely successful, more than I ever thought. And we brought in over 57,000 pounds of food. That is, that is significant and something for this community to be super proud of. I am also very grateful for the leadership of Mark Behuth next to me, who played an integral role in the implementation of that first pop, stop, and go model that we did in the spring. And he currently is coordinating the logistics on a macro to micro level to ensure that we have another successful Stop, Pop, and Go here on September 19th. And we'd like to recognize the organizations that are going to serve as drop-off sites. We were strategic to, we, Mark was strategic, to recruit individuals, organizations that could be spread throughout the entire community to make it, first of all, safe but easy for all of our, all of our residents. So the participants are Bayside Church, Powerhouse Ministries, Trinity Episcopal Church, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Lakeside Church. In addition, we have Hands for Hope, the Sierra Marlins and Folsom Sea Otters, in addition to the Junior Bulldogs. And we have a joint effort between Save Credit Union, Micron, and Kaiser that share very close property space that are, that are going to be a site. With the commitment of this community, our staff at Twin Lakes Food Bank, and all the volunteers that go into this, our hope is to fill up the warehouse again and be able to serve every individual and family that's in need in our community. And that, that's it. Everybody from the senior citizen on a fixed income, who oftentimes has to decide, am I going to pay my rent, pay my pharmaceutical bill, or get groceries? To the single mom that's on permanent disability that came in last week crying for help because she didn't know how to feed her three-year-old daughter? To the hairstylist who suddenly, and for the first time, is without income, trying to figure out how to feed her family. And for every individual with different stories that come in, we know that through the efforts of this food drive, we will be there to provide the support and more importantly, the food that they need. Thank you very much.
Did you have anything? Go ahead.
I just want to add one more shout-out, one more group actually that wasn't recognized, and that is Christina's, Christina and her team. They have done a lot of work for this food drive and for the Folsom Day of Service with the marketing materials, the announcements, these cool t-shirts. So I just want to appreciate them. We put them through the wringer on a lot of that stuff for the food drive. Thank you.
All right. In addition to the food drive, we have donation drives planned. Once again, it'll be a drive-through format, collecting bicycles, glasses, yarn and fabric, socks, purses, and Christmas gifts. And for the first time, we're adding a blood drive. It's going to be held two Saturdays from Service Day, on Saturday, October 3rd. It's a chance to give, donate blood to patients in need and that'll be from 10 to 3 at the community center. So there are these projects and many more available and volunteer opportunities are still open. Residents are encouraged to visit folsomcommunitieservice.org to learn more and to sign up. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We just want to extend our thanks to the entire committee. We know you guys work all year to make this one day go off without a hitch and so we thank you. You've had to be creative and flexible this year to make sure that we can do this in a safe manner. But I want to echo Lisa's comments. I think a lot of people are feeling sad and frustrated with everything that's going on with COVID and I think the best way to combat those feelings is to do something for someone else. So I know many of us are looking forward to this day and thank you for the opportunity to serve. And of course, thank you to our wonderful sponsors, especially Dignity Health, for making this happen every year. So thank you. Any of my colleagues want to make a quick comment or have a question?
You hit it perfectly. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is item number four. This is a presentation on pinhole leaks. For those of you following along, the PowerPoint presentation begins on page 13 of your packet. City Manager Elaine Anderson will introduce the item and then Environmental and Water Resources Director Marcus Yasutaki will make a presentation.
Okay, thank you for your patience. I know this is what the most, majority of you are here for and those of you who are listening on the phone, let me just explain a little bit how this is going to work. Again, our city manager is going to make some comments, then Marcus is going to give his presentation, then the council will have an opportunity to ask questions of Marcus, and then we will open this up for public comment. We have a lot of emails, I think 21 emails that are going to be read into the record tonight. There may be other people on the phone who want to speak also and many of you may want to speak. We asked if you haven't already turned in a blue speaker card to fill that out and just bring that up here, maybe to the city manager and she'll pass it up. Okay? But everybody who wants to be heard will have an opportunity to be heard. So, city manager, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We are bringing this item to you proactively because we want to continue our quest to be open and honest and transparent as much as we can regarding the troubling issue of pinhole leaks in Folsom. This is just another opportunity to tell you in our community what we know, what we don't know, and most importantly, what we're doing to find answers that will make the leaks stop. We understand that pinhole leaks are frustrating, stressful, and often financially costly for our community members. I want to personally assure you that from the moment we received our first call about this problem, we've been doing everything we can to ask for information and assistance from affected residents about the problem, analyze our current and previous water quality testing, benchmark against our neighboring water agencies, research other communities who have experienced the same problem, past or present, and fast-track the process to retain third-party experts. We have also set up a webpage dedicated to this issue, which includes a frequently-asked questions document that addresses some of the common themes we've heard as to the cause of the issue. We, as your city staff, are well-aware that people already have so many challenges right now and among them shouldn't be nervously looking up at their ceilings every moment or worse, dealing with the aftermath of a major leak. With that, I will turn it over to Environmental and Water Resources Director Marcus Yasutaki, who has been working tirelessly to find answers.
Thank you, Elaine. Mayor Kino, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources Director. I've got a quick presentation tonight that just will outline some of the things we've done to date, some of the things we know about the various locations where these pinhole leaks are occurring, and just what we are currently doing with outside party consultants to try to identify what the answers might lead us to. So the first call we received here at the city was on July 20th, 2020. And I know this doesn't, it's not the first date where a pinhole leak occurred because we have had some that occurred prior to this, but this is the date in which we received information, at least in 2020, prior to it becoming more widespread. As of the second, we had 620 reported. I checked about an hour ago, right before the meeting started, and we're right about 660. And again, this is just what's been reported to us. There may be people or businesses out there that have not reported anything. If you haven't, please reach out to us at folsomwaterquality@folsom.ca.us or 916-461-6190 so we can get your information. This has been occurring throughout the city. Oh, and I'm sorry, and for those of you that might be following along, this is page 14 of the agenda packet. It's reported throughout the city. It's not isolated to one particular area within the City of Folsom. Some of the trends that we've noticed to date, mostly houses in the 80s, 90s, and early 2000s, although we have had some more come on in the early 2000s and then some pick up kind of in the mid to late 70s that we've recently encountered, mostly on the horizontal pipelines, so pipelines that are running flat, and then mostly in cold water lines. Now, these aren't all instances, this is just the trend that we are seeing relative to the data that we have received to date. Our next slide is on page 15. I just wanted to give a, an idea, or for those that don't know, what the regulatory, what the regulatory requirements the city has in order to deliver treated water and all the things that we are supposed to do. So one is bacteriological sampling. You know, we got to ensure that there's no coliform or anything that could produce, you know, bacteria in our drinking water. We have to test for inorganic chemicals, organic chemicals, secondary contaminants, so copper, iron turbidity and odor, radiological, so radium and uranium, disinfection byproducts, so there was a stage one that was introduced and then stage two came along and actually tightened stage one. So it identifies certain levels of chlorine residual, total trihalamethanes and haliocetic acids that we do have to test for in the distribution system. And then the lead and copper rule. And this rule is intended to identify if a water system is having any lead or copper in homes leach into the water supply. So when you turn your tap on, are you getting any lead or copper coming out as a result of the test? And each of these has various requirements in terms of how many times you have to do it, when you have to do it. Some are annual, some are every three years, like lead and, lead and copper occurs every three years. The bacteriological, that, we have to do that 24 times per week. So every week, we're taking 24 samples of bacteriological sampling. So every week, we're taking 24 samples of bacteriological sampling, and some are annual. The radiological, based on the water supply that's coming into the city, we have to do this every nine years. So previous test results show that this was not hitting on any of EPA's numbers, so the requirements that were under, under that one are one every nine years. Our next slide is page 16 of the staff report, and this is the city's actual treatment process. So this is the process we go through from water being delivered from Folsom Reservoir to the city's treatment plant. So we do have a pretreatment where we add aluminum chlorhydrate, which is the main coagulant, which binds to the particles that are in the raw water. And we also add polymer and a sand, and that helps all the particles bind together and fall out. We do add some sodium hypochlorite for taste and odor, which is chlorine, a type of chlorine. From there, we send it to our filters, which is a dual-media sand anthracite filter, and that's for the purification and clarification of water. So that removes the finer particles that are not removed in the pretreatment process. We have a chlorine contact tank, so that is where we add the additional chlorine to get it to an acceptable residual when that water leaves the water treatment plant. The requirement is between .5 parts per million and 4 parts per million. So we target right around 1.2 parts per million when it leaves the water treatment plant, because as the water moves and ages and gets further away from the water treatment plant, that residual does tend to go down. So we may have parts of our system that are maybe .7, .75, you know, once you get into the distribution system, and because we have to have .5, we don't want that to leave the treatment plant at .75 and then be below that by the time you get to the far end of the system. So that's why we target about 1.2. We do use hydrated lime, which is a pH adjustment for corrosion control, and so we target right around 8.2 to 8.5, leaving the water treatment plant. Our permit allows 8.5, so you know, targeting 8.2 to 8.5 is what we have. And then distribution system, these are, these are actual results that we get from lab tests that we collect throughout the year. The pH range between 7.7 and 8.2, like the chlorine residual, when you get to certain parts in the distribution system, that pH number will lower. And then the chlorine residual, as I mentioned, .7 to 1.2 parts per million, and that just depends on where you are at, in the system. The closer to the treatment plant, typically the higher the number, and as you get further away from the water treatment plant, it tends to lower from the 1.2 to about .7. I did forget to mention that we do have Jim Keim, our water treatment plant supervisor, on the phone for any questions about this that may come up that I might not be able to answer, so I appreciate his, his help. And then these chemicals, this process that's outlined here at the city's water treatment plant, is one, it's similar to the other water agencies within the Sacramento region, but specifically those that pool water either from Folsom Reservoir, so EID, sorry, El Dorado Irrigation District, San Juan Water District, City of Roseville, and then others that might pool water from the American River, so City of Sacramento, Carmichael Water District, when they are using their surface water treatment. And these do conform, conform to industry standard practices for delivering potable treated water to our customers. The next slide is page 17. Just wanted to give those that may not know, and those that are watching or listening, an update just as to what the city has done to date. One, on, we heard about this on the 20th, on the 21st, we started to go out and pool additional water samples throughout the distribution system. We were targeting areas that were, at least from the 21st through probably the following Tuesday, which was the 28th of July, just trying to identify those specific areas where we had the phone calls at that time, which was, you know, in the mid 60s. So it wasn't as widespread as it was or as it is today, but we tried to target that area to pool additional samples, and I believe we went and got 10 additional samples. We sent these for lab analysis, got results on a Saturday, which was, I think, the first weekend in August. And we looked at the lab results, and they are very similar to what we've had in the previous 10 years of data that we had collected and that we looked at. So there really wasn't anything different, because one thing we wanted to check was to see if anything was happening. We didn't make any changes at the treatment plant. We didn't make any operational changes in the distribution system. So we did want to see or find out, was there anything that was happening between the treatment plant and somebody's neighborhood that was any different than what we'd have expected from previous year's results? So that's why we went out there the day after we heard about this to try to identify, okay, is there any water chemistry, water quality concerns that we need to be aware of? And the, the results that we have don't show anything different from that timeframe in July compared to the previous 10 years' worth of data that we had. One thing we did when we heard about all this was also reached out to some consultants who have had studies or have conducted studies with either their own staff or with subconsultants in the field of corrosion, specifically on copper pipes. And so we reached out to Black and Beach and HDR. We were able to fast-track our process with Black and Beach to get a contract routed within the city as well as with Black and Beach. They have a sub, which is Virginia Tech University, and at Virginia Tech, they will actually do the physical, or they are performing the physical pipe analysis, so they're identifying what is in the pitted areas or the pinhole areas where the leak has occurred. And then Black and Beach is doing a water quality evaluation and analysis with all of our data from not only the, the July timeframe this year, but the previous 10 years' worth of data that we have collected, based on that outline of all those testing requirements that we need to perform and that we need to meet. And so they're going to analyze it using a, a computer model to see if there's anything happening from like a water chemistry standpoint that might be something that we would have to look into either fixing or repairing. If that's something we need to do, they will identify what that is from a water chemistry standpoint. Today, we actually routed a second contract with HDR to do a similar analysis. What we wanted to do was to be able to provide, obviously, Black and Beach's analysis, but HDR is going to do a similar analysis using their corrosion and water quality experts as well as their lab here in California. So they will be performing the, the same type of analysis that Black and Beach is doing. It's just this will be a second independent third-party that will be helping us out to, to identify, you know, potential causes or things that we need to be aware of. And we've also reached out to, to other water agencies that were experiencing similar leaks. Most of these are out of state, and I'll show that on the next slide, so slide 18 or page 18. Just to give you an idea of where we are, the analysis and the preliminary results, we expect mid-September. I was told that sometime next week, we should have the preliminary data from Black and Beach as well as Virginia Tech. And when we were reaching out, finding where this was occurring in other areas, we did get some information from Cobb County Water Service, which is in Georgia, Cobb County, Georgia, the, the State of Maryland Task Force. So they created a task force based on a Senate bill in the state of Maryland to identify this for the entire state or to look at potential causes or reasons. And then the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission in Washington, DC. What we also found when looking at what the city does from a treatment perspective, we found that the use of chemicals in our system is very similar to our neighbors, whether it's sodium hypochlorite, lime. Now, the agencies use it in, you know, not everybody uses it the same. Like, we don't use every same chemical as, say, San Juan Water District. They might, they use chlorine gas instead of sodium hypochlorite like we do, which is a liquid. So, you know, the process is very similar. The requirements are similar for each of our agencies, and then just the, the types of chemicals that are used are very similar for all of our agencies, which, yeah, has become kind of the difficult part for us because we see our neighbor agencies using the same types of chemicals that we use, but they aren't experiencing these pinhole leaks. So really, what we found when looking at, you know, Cobb County, State of Maryland, and Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission was really what we're doing now is each situation can be its own unique situation. And in order to get, you know, the answers that you need, you really have to do what we're doing, is you physically have to take the pipe out, and it's unfortunate because that means it's happening to somebody, and in this case, many, but you physically have to take these pieces out, send them to a lab, and get an analysis of what is actually occurring in that pit. Because in our review, some of it was solder-induced, some of it was chemical, water chemistry, and others, we found, and it's not the case necessarily here in the city, but it can be in some cases, on the hot water lines, recirculating systems, hot water recirculating systems, tankless water heaters, things that, you know, might increase or induce the corrosion along, along the pipeline. So a lot of that, what we found in here, may be what's happening, but the overall recommendations that we found out of many of those reports is you have to do the analysis yourself, and you have to figure out and target what might be occurring specifically in your system.
And Marcus, I just want to add, I got an email over the weekend from someone in Massachusetts that is having a similar problem, so I hope to have some additional communication with those folks, and I'll pass that information along.
All right. Thank you.
But just, just to add to your commentary, I, I think it's important for people to understand that this is a subject matter that I know well. I'm not working directly on this project because that would, there would be a conflict. But as you said, this is something that typically happens on hot water lines, not cold water lines. Frequently, the result of some change in the water chemistry that has not taken place, these are electrochemical issues. That's what's causing the corrosion project, process. There's all of the things that you would normally look at immediately, the pH, the chlorine residual, all of those things are exactly where they need to be. So I'm going to be very, very curious to see that preliminary information when it comes back next week.
Yes.
Because based on my 35 years of experience in doing this kind of work, we're doing everything that we should be doing, and the corrosion should not be taking place on cold water lines. It should be on the hotlines.
Yeah. So, thank you, Councilmember Howell. And then page 19, for those that are following along, is just if you need to report a leak or want to learn more, as I mentioned earlier, the phone number's there, 461-6190. Email waterquality@Folsom.ca.us. We do have a pinhole leaks webpage, or on the city webpage, we've got a page dedicated to the pinhole leaks. And then if you do not subscribe or you're not members of, there's News Media, Nextdoor, Facebook, Twitter, the city's e-newsletter, and the city's website where our communications manager or their office will be communicating this out to, to those that follow any one of these types of outlets. And with that...
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Kozlowski.
Yes, and I will direct my questions to you, Marcus, but Carrie should definitely jump in if, if this is in your wheelhouse. I'm curious about, have we seen any trend in who the manufacturer of the copper pipe is? Because we should be able to determine that from the markings on the piping, or is it so commoditized that you can't figure that out?
Well, I can tell you, Councilmember Kozlowski, sorry, just from the couple of pieces that we have seen, I have a couple in my office, one's probably four feet, another's probably six feet. You can see the markings in terms of the type of copper, and it states "Made in the USA", but it does not have a stencil or stamp on it that states who the manufacturer is. Now, that I...
That, that might be something that you could potentially track through the Copper Development Authority, and I can get you in touch with them.
Because I could imagine that one possible culprit is the pipe itself in terms of the purity of the copper that's there, if there was...
But they can, they can determine that based on the analysis that they're doing.
Okay. Excellent.
They're doing XRF, they're, all of that's, all of that's being done by lab in Virginia.
That's part of it. Okay. Excellent. So, so then, I guess my follow-up to that is, if you did end up with conditions that caused corrosion from the inside out on a typical residential copper water line, what is the length of time, under normal circumstances, that it might take to actually result in a pinhole leak? Because I, I, you know, we were talking about prostate cancer earlier. These things could have been developing over the cor, I mean, they may have started years and years and years ago, potentially.
Yeah. Based on the, the agencies that I've pointed out before, probably any, and this is a wide range, but anywhere from two to 40 years.
Okay.
A lot of it just, you know, depends on each specific instance and location. Some may happen sooner. Like, one of the instances where you might have this happen sooner is if a house has chlorinated water in its system, but does not have use for a month or two, and you just have chlorinated water sitting there, that could be, that's one item that has been mentioned that could lead to...
Contributing factor.
Starting the pitting, and then over time, it would develop...
It's lack of flushing, and that will typically happen if the, more often than not, it's in brand-new construction, when the water system's been activated, but no one's living in the house. Or if somebody leaves for a long time period, and no one's turning any faucets on or off, and no water moves through the system.
Gotcha.
So they've had that, maybe, you know, one to two months of non-usage. They've seen it as early as, you know, year two, where the, the pinhole has begun.
Okay.
And if you look at the, if you look at the inside of any of the piping...
Yeah.
It's not uniform corrosion on the inside. There's no corrosion on the inside of the pipe at, with the exception of the location where the leak is.
That's what made me think of the purity of the metal, which...
Yeah.
Could be contaminants within the process of manufacturing copper sheet that becomes the pipes, so, yeah. So I guess last thing, and just, and this one's just more for clarity for everybody. When you were talking about the, the chemical chlorine that we end up introducing into the water before we send it out, and you said that, you know, some of the local agencies that pull water from the lake or from the American River use a similar process, but a, we use a, a liquid chlorine versus them introducing it as a gas. Is there, I mean, is ultimately the water leaving each of our treatment plants, ours and those others, chemically distinct in any way because of the type of process that you use? Or do they end up, is the resulting water the same thing?
There's, there's no difference in sodium hypochlorite versus gaseous chlorine.
Okay.
The only difference in those two products is the safety for transporting it. As an example, in densely populated areas, for the most part, transporting gaseous chlorine is illegal.
Sure.
So because San Juan Water District is in Placer County, there's far lower restrictions on transporting what is a highly hazardous product. In fact, as an example, regional sand no longer gets gaseous chlorine by train. They used to get it by train, and they don't do that anymore. It's just because of the population densities. Because if, if you, if you have a, a truck that's hauling, that's hauling sodium hypochlorite, it's basically bleach. Truck gets in an accident, it spills, it goes into the storm drain, it kills some plants, but it doesn't kill any people. Gaseous chlorine will kill people.
Yeah.
So, so in terms of the overall quality that we are all trying to achieve...
Yeah.
We're all trying to achieve, you know, very similar targets in terms of pH and chlorine residual.
Sure.
So that is very similar between our agencies in terms of what we're trying to meet when it leaves, when the water, treated water leaves the water treatment plant.
Understood. But the water leaving our treatment plant versus San Juan's ends up chemically indistinct? Indistinct is what I'm saying, in case the mask broke that up.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. That's all. I'll go down the rabbit hole further on another occasion.
All right. Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, just kind of follow up on that, what was just discussed. So, so you mentioned, Marcus, that, you know, you, the data that you've looked at, and, you know, all the testing that's been done over the years, that over the past 10 years at least, what you're seeing is very consistent as far as the treated water coming out of the plant and into the homes, right?
Yes, that is correct.
So, and this kind of gets to the point and question that Mike was just making. So compared, you, you mentioned the similarities of water treatment amongst the various water agencies in the region here. So, so that, that water testing and the consistency over the past 10 years... So, so that, that water testing and the consistency over the past 10 years, it, it's, and I think you were just saying this, was what you're looking at as far as treated water in the system compared to, say, treated water, City of Roseville, treated water, San Juan, again, these agencies that are drawing water from Folsom Lake also look very similar.
Uh, that is correct. Now, we didn't get their, like, these annual water quality tests, these 24 samples per month that we have to take. We did not get that data information, but we took their, uh, their consumer confidence reports uh, for the last four years and just did a, a comparison. And, you know, some of the things they're looking at there are like alkalinity, chlorine, chloride, pH, uh, electrical conductivity, sodium, sulfate, total dissolved solids. So they have a handful of testing for, that we all have to produce results for in a consumer confidence report. And if you look at those numbers, uh, those numbers as well don't have any striking anomalies between us or the other agencies we looked at. And the agencies we looked at was Eldorado Irrigation District, San Juan Water District, and the City of Roseville. So we were trying to focus on the ones that all pool and treat water from Folsom Reservoir as the origin of, uh, the raw water.
Okay. And then, and then getting back to the hot water, cold water, um, pipes with, that are being most affected in the, in your report, it says you're seeing mostly cold water pipes that, where these pinhole leaks are occurring, right?
That is correct, yes.
And then, and then Carrie was just mentioning that usually when you see these problems, it's, it, is it, I, I, I guess the question is, is in, in other instances of this, it's mostly hot water pipes? Did I hear that right, or?
And, yeah, and she could probably speak to how it happens better than I can, but typically what happens is in a water heater, you know, there's, uh, what they call a, a sacrificial anode. So it's like a, a rod that hangs inside that's intended to be the sacrifice for corrosion. So instead of eating at the inside or corroding the inside of your water heater, uh, what happens is it slowly starts to eat away at this anode, this sacrificial anode, so you don't cause damage to your water heater. But there are times that potentially on the inside of your water heater, if you do get flakes of corrosion or rust, that can ultimately make it up into your wa- your hot water pipe, which if it sits at a point in time, then you have a spot where you potentially can have the pitting start to occur and then a, a pinhole leak.
Okay.
And then I know, uh, Councilmember Howell knows this better than I do, but there's some, uh, instances with the, the tankless water heaters that she, uh, informed me about, uh, several weeks ago. And she's heard some instances where-
But, but we're seeing, what's the percentage as far, that you can determine at this point as far as, you know, the 620, uh, cases of this? Um, like, what's the percentage roughly as far as hot water or cold water versus hot water?
Uh, if I had to venture to guess without doing the calculations, we're probably 95% cold water.
Okay, that's significant, yeah.
And then we have had some instances where people have reported leaks in slabs, so in their foundation, uh, but those have been tied to, uh, installation. So installing that on rock or not properly wrapping that before pouring the concrete and you have a rock that sits on the outside, uh, at least that's what's been reported to us. Now, I don't know of other instances where the slab leaks were occurring from the inside out. The ones that we've been reported to or the ones I know about have been from the outside in.
Okay. And then, um, but, you know, ki- I, I guess I got two questions that are related. So, and, and, you know, a typical uncompromised copper piping system in a home, um, what, what is the anticipated lifespan of that? It seems like it could be a very long time.
With the type that's typically used in, uh, houses, which is the type M, which is also the thinnest walled hard, uh, or copper pipe that's used, you might find references between 40 and 50 years, uh, but others-
That's only going to be in newer construction. In older construction, it was typically, um, either K or L, which is a thicker wall pipe. Um, and I'm not aware frankly, and I don't think the Copper Development Authority would, um, give you any time span that was probably less than 100 years.
Okay. And then related to that, just to kind of give myself an idea of how comfortable development and, and I know there are other, other issues related to this. So, um, there are new houses being built in Folsom. Are tho- are they all using copper pipe or have they, has anybody gravitated towards PEX?
That's a good question. I'd have to probably check with our building department, but I know people and the housing industry in general has steered towards using the, the PEX product.
Okay.
Uh, for internal piping.
Just kind of curious, and I know there's pros and cons to that, but I was just curious of that. Okay, that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Any questions, Carrie?
Nope.
Okay. Um, Marcus, um, are we required to report all these leaks to state agencies like the Water Resources Control Board? Are you in contact with them?
Uh, one, Councilmember, you know, we are not required to report these to the State Water Board, Division of Drinking Water, but we have reported these to, uh, our, basically the engineer that oversees the, the city's, uh, permit and operating permit. We have reported this to them and we do have a meeting scheduled. I want to say it's on the 29th with the State Water Board. So we did have it, our State Water Board staff, sorry, not the, the Water Board itself, but State Water Board staff, just to go over anything that we found today, but also, uh, what, uh, what's occurring within the system, i- if anything's different than what they've seen. Because they are the agency that issues the city the operating permit for the treatment plant and the distribution system.
Okay. And just a general question about water. You know, you see a lot of people comment and say that they can smell chlorine in their water. Um, and you mentioned that, you know, you have a certain chlorine level when it leaves the water treatment plant, but then as it travels to our homes, the level goes down. So would that mean that if you live closer to the water treatment plant, your chlorine level is going to be higher than me if I live farther away?
It, in most cases, it will be. But if you turn your faucet on, say, on a Tuesday, but the person down the street does the same thing on a Tu- or not down the street, but in another neighborhood on a Tuesday, yours, if you live closer, is likely to be higher. If they turn theirs on on a Tuesday, but you don't turn yours on until, say, a Saturday, it's likely that your chlorine residual will have decreased during that time of non-use. So, uh, you would most likely have to compare it kind of day to day as opposed to different timeframes. But yes, in general, your chlorine level would be higher closer to the treatment plant than you would be further away from the treatment plant.
Okay.
And honestly, given the levels of chlorine that come out of your faucet at home, unless you have, um, a, a really big nose like mine and a really, really good sense of smell, it's extremely unlikely that you're going to, you're going to actually be able to smell chlorine. It's dramatically different, as an example, than the chlorine level in your pool.
And, and for those that ask if we do have chlorine in the water, yes, we do. We are required to have a chlorine residual in the water by law as part of the treatment process.
And for those on, on so- certain social media sites that are claiming that the city is trading with chlor- chloramine, we are not now. We never have, nor will we.
That was going to be one of my questions. Have we ever used chloramine?
Uh, to my knowledge, we have not used chloramines. We used, uh, chlorine gas until about 20 years ago and then made the switch from chlorine gas to, uh, sodium hypochlorite. And Jim Keim, if that is incorrect, you can correct me, but, uh, if not, that's, uh, 20 years, about 20 years ago when we switched from chlorine gas to sodium hypochlorite.
And it was a safety and a cost issue. That was why we switched.
Okay. And there's a portion of the city, I believe in American River Canyon, that gets their water from San Juan Water. Have they reported any leaks?
I have not heard of any leaks reported, uh, by those, uh, north of the river that receive water from San Juan Water District.
Okay. And when you talked about the other agencies in Cobb County, Georgia, the state of Maryland and stuff, I know they said that we, we have to go through the process that we're doing right now. We have, you know, third-party investigators and stuff. But did they have, I mean, were they able to tell you what the cause of their leaks was?
So if I had to narrow it down between all the information that we had for those particular cases, uh, one, uh, in some areas was, uh, water chemistry, but part of that was the originating water being groundwater versus surface water like the city. Uh, but it didn't rule out all surface water. It was just in, in one particular case. Uh, two was installation. So they had, in one of their cases, they sampled four pieces of pipe in, in this particular area of Cobb County, Georgia. And those four pieces came back as what they call solder-induced, uh, corrosion. So when you solder joints together, you know, like welding for copper, basically, uh, that solder or the flux-
If you don't properly clean it, then the flux will move down the pipe and cause corrosion problems further away from the weld.
Yep. And then in another instance, uh, they did have spots where po- copper pipe is physically cut, so we needed to make it cut to length. If you do not properly clean the end and it has rough edges, that was another point of where this could occur. And then there's one other that was microbial-induced corrosion. Um, but that was a, a specific location in, I've, I'd have to go back to see if it-
And that's usually caused by oil getting in the water supply.
Uh, that was, uh, in Cobb County as well.
Okay. Um, and then, you know, I, I know we're at about 660 reported. Just in terms of outreach to residents, obviously, there's a Facebook group that's, and this has been all over social media. We put it in our, our monthly newsletter that gets mailed to every household, correct? Okay, and has there been any- Anything in our, um, our utility bill that goes out in the mail?
Uh, we have not put anything in the utility bill.
Okay, so that, that might be something to keep in mind. And then just one last thing. I just want to be assured, I mean, I think for most of us, me included, um, whatever the analysis comes back, I mean, it's going to be kind of Greek to me. I'm going to need you to interpret it. Um, but I, I just want to be sure that that analysis, whatever we get back from Black and Beach and HDR and Virginia Tech, that that is made public, uh, in its entirety.
Yes, that'll go right up on the website in its entirety.
Okay, okay.
And then I did forget to, uh, identify one other item in your previous question about, you know, any specific areas within those agencies that, uh, had, uh, corrosion pitting problems. And, and one other that they found was, uh, sulfur aluminum and silicon present, silicon present within the, uh, pit itself. So what this didn't identify was how that all physically got to the copper pipes. But one item I know we test for as well is aluminum. And the recent tests that we have, it has come back as a, a non-detect or an ND, which means that the, uh, equipment used by the lab was unable to detect aluminum in, uh, the water supply.
Aluminum in contact with, with copper would lead to major corrosion problems.
Yep, and so they did find that in one of the studies in Cobb County as well.
And, and silica, more often than not, those sorts of, um, things are going to come from groundwater supplies as opposed to surface water.
Okay. Marcus, if you could, uh, hang nearby and we want to keep Jim on the line. Um, Krista, we want to go ahead and hear from the public. I'd like to do the folks who are here in the chambers who've, um, submitted speaker cards first, then go to anybody who is, um, holding live on the phone who wants to talk, and then finally to the emails that want to be read into the record, okay?
Okay, so I only have one speaker card from, presented from the room this evening, and that's from Harold Momquist.
And just a reminder, if anybody else wants to address the council on this, you can fill out a blue speaker card and turn it into the city manager and we'd be happy to hear your comments.
Mind if I lowered my mask?
Whatever you need to do. Welcome.
Well, thank you for having me. Um, I'm Hal Momquist, call me Hal. Uh, I suffered my first leak on the morning of the 21st. I had 10 neighbors within two blocks who suffered leaks just like that the same morning. My neighbor behind me over here, Dorina, she had a leak, I guess, the Saturday before, and she's had six leaks. So it's interesting. What I found that these leaks, same thing, a lot of them are in the entry of the garage in the one-inch main line and it's cold. You're right. Some have had it in, after the hot water heater, but it's not very common. I started a group on Facebook called Pinhole Pipes. Some of you may know about it. In less than two weeks, we've grown to 1,668-plus members. I also have started a Google Analytics or Google Drive where I am having people fill out a survey, some basic questions. And you can see that if you go on to Facebook or you can go into the Google Drive. If you send me an email, I can certainly supply you that information. What I'm finding by all this is that in most cases of the horizontal pipes, many of the homes, like you said earlier, in the 70s, 80s and 90s, these are all various builders, various copper tubing, none of it from the same place. It couldn't be, not over 30 years of build. Yes, fl- uh, the actual, what do they call it, the flux or whatever they used-
Flux that's used in the soldering process.
Yeah, that can be present, but how do you determine that all these homes in such a very short period of time spring these leaks? That's something we're all very concerned about, yes. And I'm glad you're addressing it. But the bottom line is people are getting very anxious. So there are a lot of comments out there. I mean, I try to keep the, the group very narrow and straight and try not to get people worked up. And when they do get worked up, you try to calm them. But they all want answers. So I'm glad to hear you're going to make the report that you're going to get from Virginia Tech in its entirety, because I'd like to see it myself. And I have been doing, I'm, I've been in the business of selling trailer hitches for 30 years. And I've, I've been very fortunate to be around engineers and metallurgists, people who know this stuff, not copper tubing, of course. But I've learned a lot on how to go down the rabbit hole. I myself have had my water independently tested. I got the results today. I did see a lot of NDs like you were talking about in your presentation. I've also talked to a couple people who are in the water business as well. And I'm having them look at the report. We all want to know the answers and nobody wants to point fingers or, or get all worked up. But we do buy our water from you. You are our source. We do want answers. And if there is a problem, we want help, because a lot of us are spending thousands and thousands of dollars. So.
Just a couple more seconds and I need you to wrap it up. We've got a lot of people to get through, Hal.
Um, were any of the pipes in this town or the reservoirs cleaned recently or disinfected in the last year or so?
You know, I'm going to take the question down and then I'll have Marcus address it when we get through the speakers, if that's okay?
That would be great.
Okay.
Yeah. I do have others and if there's a place I could fire those off, I'd love to get some-
Why don't you just hand them to Marcus as you go by and he can-
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. I, I appreciate the help. We look forward to your answers.
Well, thank you for coming out and thank you for your, uh, help in trying to keep the public informed. Okay, nobody else here in the chamber, I guess?
So we had two people request to speak on the line. You want to go first and then we'll read?
Yeah.
Mayor, could I, could I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, you know, we, I, do we have a map, uh, showing where all these-
Marcus does.
So, but it, I, obviously it wasn't part of the presentation, but that, that would be really interesting to see as well, just to, you know, very quickly, graphically see.
Yep, okay. And I know Hal has one too.
Okay, so we have two callers, um, who had requested call-in information and indicated that I, that they wanted to speak. Um, so we would remind you that you have three minutes to speak, just like you would if you were in the chambers. Um, so we will let you know if you hit that three-minute mark. Um, our first speaker is Abdul Kuria. Are you on the line with us?
Yes, I am. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak on the phone. Um, I have a couple of questions. What is a remediation plan based on the, um, technicality that was presented with Marcus? And secondly, what pressure is being supplied to the homes, uh, in morning versus nighttime? Water pressure in terms of, uh, PSI levels or whatever the exact ins- unit of measurement is for supplying the pressure, water pressure to all the homes, morning versus night? That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker on the line is Andre White.
Hi, this is Andre.
Hi, welcome.
I'd just like to thank the city. I'd like to thank you guys for, uh, being proactive with this and, and going with the, uh, independent contractors and, and doubling up on those. I appreciate that. I've, I've been part of a few failure investigations in the past. So I know that, uh, you really have to, um, take your time and do this right to make sure you come to the, the right conclusion. Um, I have a few questions, uh, that I guess Marcus will take, uh, after, but, uh, my questions are, um, I know that we have, we've had some crazy- questions are, um, I know that we have, we've had some crazy seasons recently, and I'm wondering, um, if, if, if those seasons could have changed, uh, the originating water and how we respond to changes in that originating water. Uh, if there's, if it's possible, we had an extreme change in that water that, um, happened within our testing intervals. Another question is, do we have a, a city water flow map or a schematic available to the public? And if not, maybe for safety reasons, can a, a simplified map be created for us that shows wa- uh, where the water is initially treated and, uh, the order it flows from there to the various neighborhoods? Um, as, as we've seen from some of the maps, it looks like it's, uh, some neighborhoods are getting a lot more than others as far as these leaks go. Another question here, he act- uh, Marcus did a great job of answering a lot of my questions, but, um, is there a record of, of repairs or work done to the city water infrastructure, um, recently? And, and maybe where that work relates to the city water flow map? And, uh, last question, at this point, uh, does the city have any advice on how constituents can be more proactive, uh, to prevent a leak or, uh, mitigate extensive damage due to a leak? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't have any other callers who wanted to speak, but I do have, um, 22 emails that were submitted for comments to be read into the record. So before we get into that, was there any other caller on the line who did not submit an email that would like to offer comments?
Um, right here, Peter Eels.
Okay, Peter, go ahead.
Um, just real quick, just would, um, the city, um, add a water pressure analysis in the neighborhoods to their report? That would be very helpful for us, we're being recommended by plumbers to put in, uh, pressure regulators at our homes because we're reading pressures in excess of 140 PSI. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the line who would like to speak who did not submit written email com- comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and read the, the email letters. So the first is from Dawn Batowski, and Dawn writes, "It has come to our attention that most of the pinhole leaks come from one-story houses. Is that true? Thank you." Next is from Debbie Rosnan, and Debbie writes, "I own a house in the Willow Creek area by Oak Avenue Parkway, although I currently have experienced only one leak as of today. This has destroyed what was left of my peace of mind as we all struggle through the COVID pandemic. A pie chart put together by a fellow Folsom homeo- homeowner shows 50% plus have experienced only one leak, but we still hold our breath waiting to see if there's another, and many are shelling out money they can ill afford to re-pipe ahead of what we all fear is not the last. Not knowing what is causing this problem makes me hesitate to do the same in case the same thing happens to the new piping as well. Seeing what has happened to our copper pipes makes me fearful of what may be happening to our bodies. There is a definite chemical smell to water coming from my taps, and my dogs will not drink the water that comes from them. I realize you are still waiting on water test results, but in the meantime, you have a city full of scared owners looking for answers and direction." The next is from Miles Brown, and Miles writes, "Council, issue one, I had a pinhole leak in my copper piping. In repairing the leak, I have a piece of the original pipe that is about six inches long. When I look at the inside of the pipe, the corrosion area that caused the leak is tainted by a blue color surrounding the area that was corroded away to cause the leak. However, as I look into the pipe, I see quite a few other blue dot areas in the pipes that appear to be corrosion areas. As part of the study, I would like to know if we find a cause that may include the water will change in the treatment of the water to stop additional corrosion on areas that seem to already have very small starts of corrosion. I am aware of at least one Folsom resident that just had a third leak. Hopefully, the study can come up with a method to prevent fu- future leaks by stopping corrosion spots that have already started. Issue number two, I have been told that all the leaks that have been reported have been in cold water pipes. Is that true? Thank you." Next is from Reina Carlson, and Reina writes, "My home is affected by the copper pipe leaks. The ceiling collapsed and we sustained a fair amount of damage. I have many, many questions. The following are but a few. One, is there a common thread in the homes affected, such as are they all serviced by the same service line? Two, are the homes with PEX piping also having issues with the copper joints and/or fixtures? Three, have the heavy metal testing results shown anything, or have you done heavy metal testing? And four, is there any help for homeowners such as myself who need to replace all or most of their copper piping, even though the piping is not even close to the 50-year age mark?" Next is from Chris Christensen, and Chris writes, uh, question, "The city has hired two independent companies to investigate the Folsom copper pipe pinhole leaks and sent sample copper pipes that had leaks to the East Coast University for analysis. What is the status of these findings? All of the residents in Folsom that have had leaks are expecting answers and complete transparency of findings by the city." He writes, "As a Folsom resident, had two copper pipe leaks in July." Next is from James Cronin, who also provided, um, pictures along with the email, but indicated, hello, first, thank you for your attention to this matter. I have already incurred about $10,000 of damage to my home due to this problem. I have attached some pictures to attest to the issue. You can see the test results of excessive chlorine in Folsom's water on the south side of the American River. It could be a cause of the problem. Even if not a cause, you can see for yourselves that chlorine levels are well above drinking water standards and even above safe levels in swimming pools." Next is from Stephen Furman, who writes, "In cases where pinhole leaks were detected, has there been any evidence that grounding using a continuous grounding electrode conductor run from the panel to a ground rod and to the cold water pipe was not used? Or has there been cases where the water service line was used as the grounding electrode without a supplemental electrode? Thanks." Okay, next is from Mary Garrido. And she provides her address. "As a homeowner, I would like to express my concerns regarding the copper pipe pinhole leaks occurring throughout Folsom. Pinhole leaks are happening in homes, apartment complexes, and businesses throughout Folsom. The leaks are happening in buildings built over multiple decades. The leaks are happening in buildings in all areas of the city with the exception of American River north-sou- north-south, which I have been told water provided to that area is not by Folsom but by a different source. My concerns are as follows. One, these pinhole leaks are causing damage and costing residents money, time, and stress. Two, accurate data as to the number of structures that have experienced pinhole leaks is unknown. Three, the city of Folsom has published information on Facebook and a bit was written up in the most recent newsletter mailed out. But there are residents who are not on social media. There are residents who barely glance at the mailer. I encourage the city of Folsom, Water Department, Utilities Department, City Council, and Mayor to put a plan into place that will reach all residents and inform them of the problem and inquire and gather data on any and all pinhole leaks in the last 36 months. Current technology should allow for a mass email to all utility customers as well as a letter notification to be mailed to each home and business specific to this issue with pinhole leaks, not in addition to the monthly utility statement. I understand that the city of Folsom mayor, council members, and water department are aware of this problem with the copper pipe pinhole leaks and that an investigation is underway. I appreciate that our city leaders understand the severity of this matter, and I trust that they will not only be as thorough as possible, but that they will also be forthcoming and make public any and all information, data, et cetera, that they are able to ascertain. In conclusion, this problem with copper pipe pinhole leaks throughout our city has negative ramifications to all of the residents and business owners because this problem will, no doubt, negatively affect property values and home val- home sales for an undetermined amount of time if the problem is not properly identified and correctly solved. Thank you for your time and effort in this matter." Next is from Lori Gilbert. And Lori writes, "Dear Folsom City Council members, we respectfully request that you make the reports you receive from Virginia Tech and any other analytical laboratory, engineering firm, or any other resource you have information from immediately available for public review on your websites as soon as you receive them. Please do not delay posting any information you get so that Folsom homeowners and business owners can use the information potentially to decide how we will proceed protecting our properties from further water damage due to the pinhole leaks in our copper water pipes. Currently, our own Folsom home has had three pinhole leaks, all occurring between August 23 and September 2 this year. There is damage in our garage due to the leaks there and extensive damage to our kitchen ceiling. We have no idea if more will occur and need to decide how we can protect our home from more damage. Because of COVID health rules, our whole family is working and or schooling at home. Having workers in the house is another risk during the pandemic and makes the decisions of what to do even more stressful. Thank you to your staff for responding when I first wrote in. We appreciate your time and hope to find answers soon. Please keep the public updated as frequently as you can and run a transparent process in this matter." Next is from Mary James, and Mary writes, "Hello, I did check your FAQs but did not find answers to my questions below, so I would appreciate responses. One, what is the source of the city drinking water? Does the source or treatment change seasonally? Two, do pinhole leaks tend to occur more frequently in certain seasons, spring, summer, fall, or winter? Three, have any neighboring water districts experienced any similar copper pipe pinhole leaks? Thank you." Next is from Joel Marcy, and Joel writes, "Hello, my only comment for the city council meeting on Tuesday, September 8th is regarding the pipe pinhole water leak presentation. My biggest comment or question is finding out what we can do about it as homeowners, if anything. Is there anything to do other than proactively ripping out and updating all piping? I assume many in the city with this potential issue would like to know the same thing. Thanks." The next is from Kate McIntyre, and Kate writes, "I had two pinhole leaks one week apart, the first of which brought down a section of the living room ceiling. At the time, I was unaware that the pinhole problem was happening throughout Folsom, so I thought that maybe it was one defective pipe and that I'd been extremely unlucky. Since discovering this issue is becoming endemic in most Folsom neighborhoods, I've become extremely stressed. Every day, I am anticipating the appearance of the next leak. Some houses have had five or six leaks already, and there is no way of knowing how much worse the damage will become. Is this just the tip of an iceberg? Are we all going to have to re-pipe in order to relax again?" Next is from Kevin Miller, who writes, "We have had two holes. The second caused over $22,000 in water damage, according to my insurance company. It leaked where there weren't any ceiling lights, so the water pooled and ran down the walls, ruining the ceiling, walls, and flooring. We have had to re-pipe our entire house because the insurance company said if we didn't, all future damage will be on us now that we know of the defect, costing us over $10,000 in a home equity loan besides a month of disruption." Next is from Rob Milstry, and Rob writes, "We were subject to a pinhole leak in our kitchen water line. It was under the slab and required jacking the slab for access. The pinhole was apparently due to galvanic reaction between the copper pipe and a stray piece of rebar that was under the foundation. The symptoms of the leak were warm floor and closet," and he says, "Didn't put two and two together, though," "and a steady drip out of the drainage system that went on long after the last storm of the season. I still have the two-inch piece of pipe with a pinhole, if it's of any interest." Next is from Narasima Guraj, who writes, "Hello, just like many other families in Folsom, I am also a victim of the pinhole leaks at my house, really hoping that the city gets to the bottom of this issue soon and addresses it immediately. There seems to be a pattern here, and it is not just a coincidence that several of our Folsom families are facing the same issue at the same time. The repairs are quite expensive. Some of the licensed plumbers are charging exorbitant amounts of money for fixing leaks, and that also needs to be controlled and regulated. Please assign highest priority to this issue and make sure that the citizens are suitably compensated if the cause of the issue is due to the city's usage of certain chemicals." Next is from Kristoff Paco, who writes, "Hi there. Since pinhole leaks are a big problem right now in Folsom, I was wondering if the city could provide everyone with water leak detectors. A non-intrusive one and fairly priced is Flume," and he provides a website address, flumwater.com. "This could save homeowners in the city a lot of money for a small investment." Next is from Connie Ramos Hagen, who writes, "Thank you very much. I don't want to speak, but one thing I hope is reported is what housing developments have leaks and how many homes in each? There is some attempt to obtain this on the next-door neighborhood sites. Thank you." Next is from Uday Ravuva Poli, who writes, "Thank you for the call-in information. Here is the question I have. I would like to know if the city will provide any compensation for the damages occurred." Next is from Dwayne Sims, who writes, "It appears from the Pinhole Pipes Facebook page map that no homes in American River Canyon area have been affected, which are on the San Juan water. Has the city of Folsom compared San Juan and Folsom Water operations to see what Folsom has done differently? A lot of those ARC homes were built eight, in the 80s and 90s with no pipe issues, but Folsom Water is causing a disaster in those-year homes on Folsom Water. We need to compare those operations and see what has been done differently. Thank you." Okay. Next is from Sandy Verga, and Sandy writes, "My family owns a 28-unit apartment community in Folsom on Sibley, and we had our first pinhole copper pipe leak less than two months ago. Since then, we have had over 20 additional leaks. The cost to repair the leaks has exceeded $30,000, and we just received bids to re-pipe our buildings for $195,000 to $245,000. To say the least, this has caused considerable financial hardship since insurance will not cover it. I have been communicating with the city of Folsom and, as of last week, turned to the state water control board for answers. I was told that Folsom had not reached out to the state for support, and they were unaware of the situation. Why is that? Will the state be involved if any claims are filed with the city?" And last, we have the email from Farah Wood, and Farah writes, "We live right next to the water plant on Fawcett Court in Cimarron Hills. Our backyard backs up to the water plant. We have had outdoor and now indoor issues with water. We have had one pinhole leak thus far over our dining room in July. After that incident, our sprinklers started breaking left and right from too much pressure. We have a PRV on the main line to our house, but not the irrigation because it's difficult to get to. Before adding our PRV to the main, our pressure inside was 120 PSI. Had our irrigation tested, and it's not at 150-plus, I'm sorry, it's at 150-plus. What are the city's plan with the high pressure coming through? We can't afford to keep fixing pinhole leaks and outdoor pipes and sprinklers. We try and take preventative measures, and we still have water issues. Our next step is to re-pipe. We will then be out of pocket almost $20,000 at that point from this pinhole leak. Why not have pressure reducers on everyone's meters before water makes its way to the house?" Madam Mayor, those are all your submitted comments.
Okay, thank you. I know we, a lot of that was covered in the presentation, but we will go back over some of these things. Um, so Marcus, let's just go through these one by one. Um, are you keeping a map of the pinhole leaks, and is that something you could put up on the city's website?
We do have the addresses. We'll just have to update those. We put a map together probably a couple weeks ago, um, but we would have to update the map with- but we would have to update the map with the addresses associated since the two and a half weeks ago or so we created the first one. But if that's the request, we can put one together.
I think that would be helpful. Councilmember Warren wanted to see that, and yeah, that would be good.
I think we'll just have to make sure everybody knows that it's only current as of the date, likely that we put it up, or maybe a couple of days before that. So if there is a timeframe in which you think, Councilmember Warren, you would like to see that, if you want to call it a routine update, just, you know, you can let me know, and we can work on that so we know every...
Maybe weekly or something like that?
Yeah, you know, I mean, certainly, yeah, I don't want it to cost a tremendous amount of time, but I think for, you know, an example is myself. Yeah, I live in a house that was built in 1987, probably close by some of these folks. So I'm just curious to see, you know, how much in my immediate neighborhood, close by neighborhoods and stuff. I, I think a lot of folks in the city would be interested in, you know, how close this might be to them or how expansive it is, you know, again, south of the American River.
Yep, we can do that. I think the first one will take a couple of days probably to create just because we have the 660-plus, but I think as you add them on a weekly basis, it just becomes a matter of populating those new ones.
And, and I, you know, I don't know if there's a, you know, some sort of a privacy issue here. I, I'm not interested in, you know, seeing exactly what house has a problem, but, you know, just something a little more general. There might be people that just don't want this known, and I kind of get that as well. So, you know, if there are those concerns, I, I, I understand that. So, you know, maybe something a little more general, but I know that's probably, you know, harder to do. So, so I suppose what I'm saying is, I'm sensitive to that as well. So if that causes a problem and if people are concerned about that, we probably need some sort of a different mechanism. But, you know, I, I know there's a lot going on. You're working really hard on this, as many in the department are. So, you know, I don't want this to be a time-consuming thing, but I do think...
If you kind of grayscale it and just put the main streets in, I think you'll be fine.
We'll try to strike that balance.
Yeah, I, again, I, I don't want to call out, you know, homes that have had this, that they just really, you know, for various reasons, don't want people to know.
Yeah, you could probably color-code neighborhoods for, you know, to indicate the level of the problem in locations.
Okay.
Oh, because color-coding is working so well everywhere else.
Any indication that this is happening primarily in one-story houses?
You know, that is not a question we have been asking, whether it was single-story or two-story, but I don't have any indication that it's primarily one-story. I do know there are houses that this has happened on a two-story home because it ends up being the ceiling between the first story and the second story, or the floor of the, the second story. But if that's a question that we want to start gathering information about, we would have to call everybody back or start collecting that moving forward, but...
Well, you'll have to decide if that would be helpful information. Okay, and somebody asked, has it all been cold water pipes? No, but you said primarily 95% if you had to take a guess.
Correct.
Have you had any reports of pinhole leaks in PEX piping?
No, I have not had any direct reports of pinholes in PEX piping. The only report I'm aware of in PEX piping is potentially rats or mice chewing on the PEX, but that is all I'm aware of.
Okay. Somebody asked about our source of drinking water, which obviously it comes from Folsom Lake and then goes to the water treatment plant. We had a couple of people ask if the seasons affect the water as it's coming out of Folsom Lake, and then would that have any effect on the way you treat it or possibly on the pinhole leaks?
So, yes, there are seasonal changes to the raw water coming into the water treatment plant. So for instance, in the wintertime, after maybe two or three significant storm events, you get a lot of runoff. So you get a lot of debris coming into the raw water into Folsom Reservoir. What that does is it increases what we call turbidity, or if you want to look at it, the cloudiness of the water, or how many particles are in the water, but it does not change the treatment process. So if we have, for instance, we have a target of .02 to .03 NTUs, which is a measure of turbidity. So that's what we want leaving the actual filters from the treatment plant. So before it even gets to the filters, that is our target. That target does not change. So we just have to do the work to get from, say, 50 NTUs as it comes in, down to that .02 to .03. So the process itself does not change. The chemicals used does not change. We just may use more of it because we have to treat more particulate matter, but it doesn't change what we use and how we use it. And our goal through the filters does not change.
Okay, and a couple of people asked about chlorine levels and indicated that they could smell, but you, again, that was covered in the presentation. You indicated that that is very tightly regulated, and we fall within the normal range.
Correct.
Okay. Are we doing any heavy metal testing?
We are required to test, and you'll have to forgive me, I don't know all the metals off the top of my head.
It's a very long list, actually.
So we've got, we have, these are the metals that we have to test for. Calcium, copper, iron, magnesium, manganese, potassium, hardness as a form of calcium, silver, sodium, and zinc. So that is what we have to test for.
Okay. You're probably going to have to go back and watch this meeting video so you can update our FAQ, right, Marcus? Okay. Somebody asked about the status of findings, which you indicated we should have those in the next couple of weeks, hopefully.
Yes.
From the consultants. Somebody asked about neighboring agencies having the same problems. We've, have not heard about any agencies having the same problems, although our water quality and processes are similar. Some people asked if we could provide all residents with water leak detectors.
So, i-if you want to get an idea of what that would cost, although each individual unit may seem like a low price of $200, this Flume device, that's about $3.7 million if we wanted to provide one for every home. So that just gives you an idea of what that cost would entail, because there's about 18,500 or so single-family residential units at $200 apiece.
And then several people asked about water pressure. Will there be any sort of, I guess, water pressure analysis?
As part of the studies with HDR in Black and Beach, water pressure analysis is not, water pressure determination or analysis is not part of their scope of work. Now, if we wanted to identify potentially what that would be, we do have what we call a water hydraulic model. And basically, they, they run the system model in terms of, you can look at morning operations, you can look at afternoon operations, evening operations, you can look at peak use of a daytime.
Marcus, I'm going to recommend that we actually, we select a sampling of the houses that have experienced the leaks and go out and check and see what the water pressure is.
Okay.
The hydraulic modeling isn't, isn't necessarily going to confirm that there aren't unique circumstances, for whatever reason, taking place. But if we have people that are hiring plumbers, we have plumbers that are coming out and saying, water pressure's 180 PSI, even though we believe it's only 60, we need to have a measurement to say, no, it's not 180, it's 60.
Okay, and then if I can follow up, Councilmember Howe, to what extent are we talking all 660 locations?
No, a sampling, a sampling.
Okay.
Okay. Marcus, is there a city water flow map that could be made available to the public?
Yes, and I will double-check. We do have our 2016 Water Master Plan online, and that identifies various, you know, system assets. I don't believe it has every pipe drawn in every city sheet.
Honestly, Marcus, I, I think that's a, that's a bad precedent to set. Most water agencies, most agencies that, that basically feed hazardous materials, pipelines, gas lines, fuel lines, that information is not made public. And there are very valid reasons for not making it public so that if someone wanted to do damage to the system, that would make it much easier for them to find. If people have speci-, I would recommend that if people have specific questions, they can call about their neighborhood, but I don't want us publishing where every pipeline is located in the city of Folsom on the website.
Okay, again, yeah, just...
If, if there is interest, the Water Master Plan that is online does have facility locations like tank sites, pump stations, pressure-reducing valves that are within the city.
I think people have, you know, the, if they want to ask which zone they're in, that's fine. And I think maybe that's information that would be helpful, that this part of the city is Zone 1, Zone 2, Zone 3, Zone 4.
Okay, again, you can balance information with security. Let's see, someone asked if we have a record of work done to the infrastructure at the water treatment plant or anything related to water, and, and how does that record of work done relate to the water flow map?
We can provide historic information in terms of the water capital improvement projects that we've worked on. Just give me a date in terms of how far back you want us to go, and we can provide all the different water projects we've worked on and where we have worked on those. If that's of specific interest, we can do that.
There may even be some confusion about the recent pipeline failure along East Bidwell, but that had nothing to do with any of this.
But yes, if there's a, if you want us to look back at the last five years of water projects, the last 10 years, we have that information, and we can provide that.
Okay. Somebody mentioned the State Water Resources Control Board, which I asked that question, and you indicated that you have been in contact with them, and you do have a meeting set up this week. Some folks asked how they can be proactive to prevent leaks. I've seen some stuff online where people say they, they shut off their, the water to their house, I guess, and then they watch the water meter to see if it moves. Is that, is that a accurate way to see if you have a leak?
Well, if you shut the water off to your house, but you do it after the meter, and that meter still shows that water is going through, there's probably one to two things happening. One, either your valve that you shut the water to your house is not fully functional and doesn't close all the way, or actually, I guess there could be three things. You could have a service line leak between the meter and your shut-off valve. And the third thing, which is the case of Ms. Wood on Fawcett Court, is if you have your irrigation system plumbed before the shut-off valve and after the meter, if the valves are not closing on your sprinkler systems, then that could also be having or showing a leak. So it would be difficult to specifically identify that it's a pinhole leak if the meter's still turning. But if you shut your valve off at the house, and you know, and you know that the meter's not spinning, right, then you may not be able to catch the leak because you're, you shut the valve off. So you wouldn't be able to see anything past the valve, which is typically everything in your house.
Okay. Okay, this was a little too complicated for me to paraphrase. In cases where pinhole leaks were detected, has there been any evidence that grounding, using a continuous grounding electrode conductor, run from the panel to a ground rod and to the cold water pipe was not used?
I am going to be completely honest with you. I am not an electrician and don't know specifically if that could be the case. What I have read about is that it's, if that were the case, it typically happens on the outside of the pipe because it's not using water as a carrier. It's using the actual piece of copper pipe as a carrier for a stray current or some electrical current, but maybe Councilmember Howe...
Right, it's, it's an electrical current issue. If you're getting shocked in your house, there may potentially be a problem with the ground in your house. But frankly, it's not necessarily a bad thing for that line to be a ground, but that would lead to corrosion, external corrosion, happening at the location where the copper or steel water service enters your house. It's not going to happen inside your house.
Okay, and the follow-up question was, or have there been cases where the water service line was used as the grounding electrode without a supplemental electrode?
I just addressed that.
Okay, good.
Same thing.
When somebody thinks that they're, they have the start of a corrosion in their pipes, is there a way for them to prevent it from going any farther?
No, there's, there's, currently, there is not a preventative measure that's going to show or prevent another pinhole leak from occurring.
We, we are hoping that that's going to be the recommendations contained in the reports from HDR in Black and Beach.
Yeah, that is what we anticipate we'll get. If it's truly a water chemistry concern, then the, the reports are going to point to either a solution or a range of solutions that the city may be able to implement.
Okay.
Mrs. Howell, is, or Ms. Howell, is, are there...
You can call me Carrie Mike.
Carrie? I was stumbling over what to ask you and stalling there. The, i-is there the equivalent of a prophylactic fix-a-flat for this situation? That could be introduced into the water system of a given house?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, a couple more questions. Somebody asked about a mitigation plan, which we won't know until the analysis comes back, correct?
Correct.
Is there any help for homeowners who are having this issue? And then somebody else asked about compensation for damages. I would say, again, until we have the analysis back, we can't really address those. Would you want to add anything to those?
In terms of liability, I'll turn that over to the city attorney.
Madam Mayor, and, and member of the city council, if I may. As you know, the city will always do the right thing as you demand and as the city manager demands, but we are not able to comment on any claims or resolution of any claims at this time. I am aware certain claims have been filed, but as with every claim, they have to be evaluate, evaluated and investigated independently. To the extent that the results of the studies that we have commissioned suggest one possible cause, we will absolutely, navel-mindedly focus on solving that problem if it's our problem that is causing the problem with our residents. After all, this is why we're here. We're here for the residents. But unfortunately, at this time, we just don't have sufficient information to comment any further.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, Marcus, questions from Howe. Did he have some questions that I didn't address?
Oh, I did take a picture of that. Sorry, I probably shouldn't get that out. But, but I did want to address one other question that I wrote down, and it just, the, the question was asked, are areas served by the same service lines? And so subdivisions are served by the same main lines coming into the subdivision, but not every subdivision receives water from the same large transmission pipeline within the city. So as Councilmember Howe pointed out earlier, there are different pressure zones spread out through the city, so 1 through 6, and each of those pressure zones has what we call a main transmission pipeline that typically goes from a pump station to a storage tank, and then from the storage tank goes into what we call the distribution system to our customers. So each pressure zone is served by what we call a main transmission pipeline, and then within that pressure zone has, if you want to look at it like a bunch of different tentacles, going out as the distribution system. So they are not all common in terms of service lines. So one of the questions was, will the report be shared in its entirety? We did address that. Yes, we will. Were any pipes or reservoirs cleaned and disinfected recently? I will double-check, but we did have a couple of reservoirs that were recoded. One, I think it was East Tank Number 2, which is off, East Tank Number 1, sorry, off of Rockport Circle. So that had a full internal and external recoat. And then I think we had three other tanks that had external recoats. So I will double-check to make sure we didn't take any water or take any of the other tanks out of service. But I do know we took East Reservoir Number 1, which is on Rockport Circle, out of service because we had to do a full internal recoat and some...
But that's all done with NSF-approved material that wouldn't have any, that shouldn't have any effect on, on that service area that's connected to that tank and the normal disinfection that's required after the, the work is done. I mean, we've been doing that for the past 40 years, 50 years.
That is correct, but I know for fact we did do East Tank Number 1, so just to address...
But there was no disinfection of pipelines, because I think he asked that as well.
Pipelines, the only pipelines that we would have disinfected mainly is the pipe break on East Nataoma. And then I'll go back, as I mentioned, any of the capital projects that we completed, we would have disinfected those pipelines, but those would be limited to certain streets.
That only gets done when the pipeline's new.
That is correct, and so the only other ones that would be disinfected are all the new pipes down in the plant area. But, you know, that's all on a separate system. Have any pumps been replaced, upgraded, or taken out of order recently? I would have to double-check. I think there's one pump at the treatment plant that was removed and taken to a pump repair location, but I can double-check to see if we... repair location, but I can double check to see if we've had any more, but I, that's the only one I'm aware of. Jim, if you're still on the phone, if you want to chime in, if there's any others at the plant that were recently removed?
No, that would be just one pump in Foothills Pump Station.
Thank you, and that was Jim Kimes, City's Water Treatment Plant Supervisor. Thank you, Jim. With our water having such a level pH, can this lead to a corrosive situation? pH alone wouldn't lead to a corrosive situation, and as I mentioned earlier, you have to look at the water chemistry in its entirety to, to determine if that source of water would lead to a corrosive situation. So that's one of the things that Blacken Beach and HDR will be doing, because you have to not only look at pH, but you look at chlorine residual, you look at potentially the heavy metals that are or are not there. So there are many items that have to be reviewed in total. pH alone wouldn't necessarily give you a corrosive environment. Now, if a pH got below seven, you can get into an acidic environment, but we don't have pH, APH in that range, so the analysis would be able to tell us more on our water chemistry as a whole.
And, and again, if it was a pH issue, it would tend to be a, a more uniform as opposed to the pinholes.
Thank you, Councilmember Howell. And then the last question I have from Howell, was there not heavy maintenance at the plant in 2019? No, we did not have any heavy, heavy maintenance at the treatment plant in 2019. So those were the questions, if Howell's listening, hopefully I...
Sure, yeah.
Oh, is he still here? Did I address them all? Okay, thank you. Sorry, didn't see you back there. And then the, there was another question about American River Canyon Water versus city water. It is water, American River Canyon Water is water that's treated by San Juan Water District, so that is physically treated different, you know, at a different treatment plant than the city of Folsom. Source water is the same, and as I mentioned, looking at, you know, the chemical makeup, the organic makeup, very similar in our treated, you know, treated product, but it is not physically treated at the same location.
Okay, Marcus, thank you very much. Jim, thank you for hanging on the line. To all the members of the public who are here with us tonight or are tuning in on the phone, we want to thank you for coming. We want to assure you that we care. We are all Folsom residents, we are all homeowners here on the council. Our city manager and many of her executive staff are also Folsom residents and Folsom homeowners. We are as anxious to get to the bottom of this as you are. We had a pinhole leak at my house about six months ago. Fortunately, I have the best next-door neighbor in the world who is a licensed contractor who took care of it for us, but you have our word that the, the full analysis that we get back will be made public, okay? I encourage you, invite you to stick around because our fire chief will be giving a very informative presentation very soon, but if you want to go, you will not offend us. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, next item, please, Krista.
Okay, next, we move on to new business and we take item 12, resolution number 10...
Wait a minute, aren't we going to do consent?
All right, we'll do consent next. Trying to move it along.
You've never made a mistake, Krista.
She's anxious to hear Chief Rodriguez's presentation.
I know. All right, next is the consent calendar.
Are there any questions or does anybody want to pull an item from consent?
I'll move consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kalzowski?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes.
Now, we'll move on to new business, item number 12, resolution number 10519, a resolution of the city council adopting the emergency operations plan 2020. Fire Chief Rodriguez will make our presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Felipe Rodriguez, I'm your fire chief. It's my pleasure this evening to present to you our update of the city's emergency operations plan. We bring forth this, this agenda item to you definitely during a time where it's very timely and much needed. We have many emergencies and disasters that have been affecting us this year and makes me really wonder like, what's next? But with that said, we're, we're ready for that. So with that, I'm going to move into our emergency operations plan.
But what's next was apparently fire.
With all of the fires happening this last month, your record number of acres burned this year, we have to be ready at, at all times. So day-to-day, the fire department, or obviously our police department, and even some of our other departments like Public Works and the water department, have emergencies. Day-to-day, we handle those emergencies. Once in a while, we'll have a very large-scale emergency or disaster, and, and we need a plan in place for that. So with that, our municipal code calls out a section for emergency preparedness, and it includes the preparation and carrying out of plans for the protection of life, environment, and property. Our Director of Emergency Service is our city manager, and she's assisted by our police chief, my, me as the fire chief and other personnel within the city. It also calls out the need for an emergency operations plan to provide for the effective mobilization of all of our resources within the city due to a local emergency, a state of emergency, or a state of war emergency, and to provide for the organization, powers, and duties, services, and staff. The emergency operations plan specifically, the last one was put together in 2004 and adopted by the council. The California Emergency Services Act, specifically within our government code, regulates information regarding emergency operations plans, and it has a purpose, three different things primarily. I mean, there's many to it, but the main three that I was able to pull out was to follow a standardized emergency management system, also known as SEMS, and the national one called NIMS, for all hazards, any type of emergency or disaster that we may face. Also, to have properly trained personnel for our emergency operations center so that we're able to support the field operations for any type of emergency or disaster that we're faced with. And lastly, so that we're eligible for reimbursement for any of the response-related costs under the disaster assistance programs. So this last couple, about a year and a half or so ago, we brought forth to you an emergency preparedness presentation, and during that, I, I mentioned that we would be updating our emergency operations plan. So we went through it as the fire department, and we, we matched it up to the California Office of Emergency Services, also known as CalOES. They put together an emergency plan review crosswalk, and they updated it in 2020, and it's for local government agencies, and it has 55 different parts. And within those 55 parts, they break it down into five sections. So with that, basically a forward, a basic plan, some annexes and some appendices, and then we also added an evacuation plan and a community wildfire protection plan update that was last done by the Fire Safe Council, Council in 2013. The next step is to obtain city council approval, and then lastly, to submit a copy to Sacramento County OES, Office of Emergency Services, and then forward it to CalOES for final approval. All 55 items, I will not be reading them all to you, but the five different parts and the 55 different items are listed before you, and some of the highlights of those, obviously, is to have your basic section up in the front with some table of contents and a resolution. And then we have the purpose of the plan and a lot of information on coordinating and organizing our emergency operations center and continuity of government, recovery, of course, all of our communication that we may have, references and glossary of terms, and then all of our appendices on the right side, you have the different parts, all of our annexes, a really robust section for all of our emergency operations center personnel to have checklists so they know exactly what they're supposed to be doing during a large-scale emergency or disaster, and then our, our plans at the very end, which is our evacuation plan and our community wildfire protection plan. If I, if I may, some of our evacuation centers, which is very important for everyone in, in our city to be aware of, we have nine different centers. We can use these at any, at any given time. There's capacity for daytime, and in nighttime, it's cut in half because if they had to spend the night, that's where we would be able to limit the quantity of personnel. Now, during COVID, we would have to obviously apply some of the different procedures that we would have for, to make sure everyone's safe, but our sports complex, Anymore Sports Complex, and our two high schools, our middle schools, Folsom Lake College, and three of our churches are all approved by the American Red Cross, all ADA compliant in order to have people for sheltering or in evacuation center for the daytime. We also went ahead and separated the entire city into 36 distinct zones for evacuations, from one up at the top left corner in American River Canyon, all the way to number 36, which is in the Folsom Plan Area, now at the bottom, in a systematic approach that we can control people coming in and out of areas and evacuating people effectively to some of our main arterials and collector routes. If I will, I just choose number 29 for, as an example for you, and that's number 29 there, and it, what you'll see there is in green, those are our arterials, and then the lighter green are, are collector routes, and then little police cars that will show exactly where they would be placed, so it's ahead of time, we know exactly where to control intersections and to get people out of those areas into safer locations. We did that throughout the city and have a plan in place, including, as Councilmember Kalzowski requested, some information on people coming into our city from other areas such as Eldorado County or Plaza County, and having a person that would be in, what we call an agency rep, report to our command post or the emergency operations center to be able to communicate with them to evacuate people into our city if need be. Very important is for all of our community members to, to understand that we have an emergency alert system that we can call people back. As a reminder, on the bottom right corner of every one of our webpages is our emergency information button. If they click that, you can find our emergency alerts, register a cell phone, so that we may be able to reach back through on Nixle or on the SAC emergency alert, so that we can call back with any specific information that we have. Ultimately, this is a partnership between us as emergency responders and our community to have a whole community approach.
Felipe, can I ask one question about the callback? I know, Elaine, this was a question that came up with the police department a few years ago with people that had unidentified numbers blocked, and, because I know, I think it was a problem, if I remember correctly, it was like some high school kids, and when police department was trying to contact their parents, the parents weren't getting the calls because they had a block on any unknown number or where the number didn't show up. Have we fixed that?
I will check into that, Councilmember Howell. I'm assuming we have fixed that, but I'll check on that and report back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, just a few thank yous. We had several people assist with this project. This was a very large project, over 500 pages. All of the members of our executive management team, led by our city manager, my administrative assistant, Jen Wile, and our VAS specialist, she put together all of our maps for us, Kate Casera. One of our fire captains definitely dug in and assisted with putting together the plan. We had a Fire Safe Council volunteer, Joe Layton, Layton Joe, sorry, assist with updating that plan. And then two of our residents, a longtime resident, Dick Harper, who's actually here today, he's in the back corner there, he's one of our CAPS members as well, was able to go through the plan along with Ken Stewart and give me some updates, looking at it from a citizen's perspective on how easy it is to understand and to be able to get through it. So much thank you for them, to them. And with that, I did have the opportunity to speak to several of you that have given me input over this entire time. I know for a fact, thank you, Madam Mayor, for reading the entire plan. I know you read all 500 pages and provided a little bit of comment. Councilmember Kalzowski for...
And I bet she found every single typo.
Those, those have been corrected already, though. Thank you for that. And for your time as well during the, the last couple decades, providing input for the previous plan, and obviously, that all goes into this plan itself. And this morning, I had the opportunity to meet with, with Council Vice Mayor Sheldon and talk to him a little bit about some, some stories about Korea and such, but at the same time, that man's been through many emergencies and provided me with some good feedback, and most importantly, he asked that people know at least two ways out of their neighborhood at all times, and that was his feedback back to me, and I just thank you very much for his input on it. So with that, I recommend the adoption of the resolution 10519, the resolution adopting the emergency operations plan and the adoption of the emergency operations plan 2020.
If I could just interject real quickly, Councilmember Howell, Chief, Police Chief Hillman has let me know that our new phone system, it reads Folsom PD on the, on the ID now.
Okay, good.
Before we get to questions or comments, Chief, I just want to say that, I mean, this was yeoman's work. This was a heavy lift, a labor of love. I think we'll all sleep a little bit better at night knowing that this is done, so thank you, thank you, thank you to you and your team for, for taking this on. Any questions or comments?
Nothing, just an honor to adopt, did the one in 2004, so the, these things get better all the time. It is, is amazing how much more detail there is and, and the work that's involved in, you know, learning from the past and, again, taking input and all that sort of stuff. So thanks for your work, Chief.
I have just one question. What do you suspect is the best practice for keeping this updated? Once every 16 years seems like it made a lot of extra work for you all at once.
So within it, the California Office of Emergency Services requires us now to have a record of changes. I believe it's always been a requirement, however, now, part of the adoption process is to submit it and update it on an annual basis at least, record your changes, and then every five years, bring it back to the city council for re-adoption of an update, and that would be the plan moving from this point forward. So 2025, you'd see it again.
Fantastic, yeah, excellent work, really, really fantastic, thank you.
Kerry?
No questions, great job.
I, I have two questions, Chief, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear in reading all the, kind of the job descriptions that people had, so I, if, if it's an emergency where you're acting as the EOC director, is the police chief acting as the operations section director and then vice versa? If he's the EOC director, you're heading operations, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And then I couldn't find the actual page, but there's something that shows the likelihood of an occurrence, and I, I'm assuming this is not your matrix, it's, you know, the state or something, but it mentioned that if something's between 10 to 100% likely to happen, or if the, if the occurrence is, I don't know how to word it, but 10 to 100% was considered likely.
Yes.
Something that has a 10 to 20% chance of happening does not seem very likely to me, so I was just surprised that the spread was so great.
Yes, that, that actually comes from the Sacramento County Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was last adopted, I believe it was put together in 2016. It's currently under re, an update again for that plan itself. That is a table that comes directly out of that plan, and 10 to 100% is what's considered likely, a likely occurrence within the next one year. So all of those items that they list are supposedly likely to happen within the next year, such as a fire, would be within that, and then over 100%, well, I mean, actually higher than that would be highly likely to happen.
That would mean it already happened.
Yeah, it's kind of like flooding, you've got to look at one year at a time. So if it's a 10% chance, it means that it's very likely to happen within a 10-year period.
Okay. So, you know, I, I did read the entire thing, and when you look at some of these different potential emergencies, you know, you read about the, you know, nuclear bomb, and it's quite depressing because it's like, basically, the plan says, none of us will be here, nothing will be left, so you know what I mean, the likelihood of that happening is not great. An earthquake, I've lived in California my entire life, I've never felt an earthquake, you know, knock on wood. But, but the thing overwhelmingly that I got from this plan is that the threat of a catastrophic wildfire is very high in the city, and I imagine that's the thing that keeps you up at night. So here's what I'm asking for you, from you. I really want you to be very honest and forthcoming in your budget discussions with the city manager about what it is you need to mitigate that fire threat, because to me, of all the things that we're dealing with in the world right now, you know, worldwide pandemic, you know, unrest, civil unrest, or wildfires, to me, this is the number one public safety hazard. And so I want you to be very forthcoming with the city manager about what it is you need, and then I want, when the city manager brings, you know, her proposed budget to us, I want to know what those needs are, because to me, this is incredibly high priority. And kind of along those lines, I know, you know, we've got three officers from PD who are working really closely to, you know, checking in on homeless folks and trying to, deal with some of those camps, and they're really doing a fantastic job. And I know that we're trying to be a little bit more aggressive about removing people from open space because of the two fires that we had here recently, but again, I, I don't know, you know, just maybe a zero tolerance policy or something, because to me, that seems like just a huge threat to have anybody... seems like just a huge threat to have anybody living in open space, cooking in open space. And obviously, that means they have to go somewhere, and then we have to deal with that. But, again, that, that's the overwhelming message that I got from this, is fire risk is, is, it's real.
Madam Mayor, absolutely. I will definitely take that into consideration within our budget proposals for the future. Wildfire is a large threat, definitely, as you see it throughout the state of California, and Folsom's distinctive by nature, for a reason, people want to move here, they want to live here, it's beautiful here. And for that, you know, we need to make sure we protect their quality of life. So, thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you. And because I read all five hundred pages, I'm going to move that we adopt the emergency operations plan.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Pick the role, please.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes, thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is new business, item thirteen, resolution number one zero five two four, a resolution authorizing joint application with Hirani Family Foundation and Sacramento Commercial Properties, Inc., to the Home Key Program. Presenting tonight will be Senior Planner Stephanie Henry.
Hi, Stephanie, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. So this next item before you this evening, resolution one, one zero five two four, is requesting City Council authorization for a joint grant application with Hirani Family Foundation and Sacramento Commercial Properties for the state's Home Key Program. So the primary purposes of the Home Key Program is to provide local cities, counties, and other local public entities with grant funding in order to acquire and/or rehabilitate a variety of housing types, including motel conversions, in order to, in order to quickly provide housing for individuals who are homeless or are at risk of experiencing homelessness and who are at risk of COVID- nineteen. So, as indicated in the staff report, in February of this year, the Hirani Family Foundation purchased the Folsom Lodge Motel and Mini Storage Facility located at five oh one East Bidwell Street. Since, or actually, prior to the purchase of that facility and following the purchase of the facility, the Hirani Family Foundation, in partnership with Sacramento Commercial Properties, has had a number of conversations with city staff, as well as supportive housing advocates and homeless service providers regarding a proposal to convert the twenty-two-room motel into a twenty-four-unit studio apartment complex for affordable housing. As indicated, the Home Key Program is set out, is set up to provide funding for this type of project, actually. So in July, July seventeenth, actually, of this year, when the notice of available funding became available, letting cities know that they could apply for home key funds for projects such as motel conversions, city staff determined that this would be a great opportunity for the city to go ahead and submit a joint application with Hirani Foundation in order to try to secure two point four million dollars of grant funding, which would provide twenty-four affordable housing units in the city of Folsom. So, under this particular grant application, the proposed motel conversion would utilize, like I said, two point four million dollars in grant funding provided by the state to cover a portion of the developers' acquisition and renovation costs associated with the project. In exchange, the Hirani Family Foundation would enter into an affordable housing agreement with the city of Folsom to deed-restrict the property for fifty-five years for affordable In addition, the grant application requests an additional fifty-one, fifty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars of funding to cover the first two years of operating expenses. There is no city match proposed with this grant application, and therefore, there is no fiscal impacts associated with that grant. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council approve resolution one zero five two four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Folsom authorizing joint application with Hirani Family Foundation and Sacramento Commercial Properties to the Home Key Program.
Any questions for Stephanie? Andy?
I just have a quick comment. And, and I think the city's had some great success with actually some fairly large affordable housing projects. One of the keys to those has been management of those properties. So that would just be my concern here, is, is that, you know, there's kind of a commitment, and, and I don't know, you know, when you're looking at, what is this, twenty-four potential units as opposed to some of these larger projects that, you know, like USA Properties and St. Anton's, you know, who are very experienced in this. So that would be my concern. Certainly, Carrie recalls the days when we had the affordable apartments on, on DuCal, and there was trouble with that. Mercy Housing came in, bought those units, and then, and then really changed the management structure of those, and it's, I think, been a success to this day since that was taken over.
It's been a huge success after Neva similarly strong-armed all of the previous multiple property owners into basically strongly recommending that they sell to the sisters.
So, so I, I guess, just, you know, just a concern is, is that, you know, doing this certainly has tremendous merit, but, you know, there, there needs to be kind of a managerial lifespan to this as well. You know, you look at deed-restricted for fifty-five years, but the success of these isn't, you just build them and then, you know, rent them out and, and stuff. There really does need to be, I think, care and feeding over time with these projects. And, and I know that gets more difficult with a smaller project like this, and it doesn't mean that it shouldn't occur, but that'd just be my one comment related to.
Is the, is the Hirani Family Foundation planning to maintain ownership? And if so, is SAC Commercial Properties going to be the property manager?
Yes, and yes. And I'd also like to add that they are, they are currently working with Hope Cooperative, which was formerly TLC, which has a property or in Folsom currently, at, I believe, eight oh nine Bidwell Street.
Yep.
So they are currently working with that group for the actual management of services for the individuals living in the facility.
Yeah, great. I'm glad there's some attention being paid.
To kind of piggyback on that, I, I think it talked about fifty thousand dollars for two years of operating costs, which does not seem like a lot of money. I mean, I.
So with that, the state actually has a budget that they asked you to complete. So Doug Scully had completed that budget based on the expenses that he had reviewed.
But that includes, like, paying an onsite manager and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that amount is derived out of a formula within that budget. We have asked the state for some assistance with the budget. There were also a few, a few errors with the budget, not, we weren't the only ones who have seen those errors. So that could be refined, but we know for sure that there are some, some cells within that spreadsheet that were causing some issues.
Okay.
But when we put all those numbers in, that was the amount.
And is it intended to just be one person per studio apartment, or could, could it be a mom and a child?
I don't think those details have been hammered out.
Okay.
They're pretty small units, so for the most part, I'm thinking it's, it's one, but a mother with a child would.
Mike, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I think I'll just make a couple of comments, that I think this is a huge benefit to the people that are, that hopefully this will, will be helped by this. I think it's a huge improvement to that particular location, both to the Folsom Lodge and to the storage, the storage facility that's affiliated with it. I think that's a, it's a huge improvement, just making this investment. And I appreciate that the Hirani Family Foundation and, in conjunction with SAC Commercial Properties, is, is willing to do this. This is a, this is a, this is a great thing, and to go along with Andy's comment, if it's properly managed, this could be very, very successful. Andy sat on the council when we had meeting after meeting after meeting about the, about the transitional housing that ultimately was constructed on Bidwell Street, and I don't think we have, we've had an issue since that was completed. So, if, if that's the model that they're talking to about overseeing some of the management, I think that could be a very good thing. I'm, I'm pleased to move the resolution one oh five two four.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes, next item, please.
Your last item this evening is new business, item number fourteen, resolution number one zero five two five, a resolution to approve and adopt a citywide pay schedule as required by, by Calpers. And Finance Director Stacy Tumani will make the presentation.
Hi, Stacy, thanks for your patience.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Stacy Tumani, Finance Director. The site in before you tonight is a requirement of Calpers. Hers requires you to adopt a salary schedule for all positions within the city. The positions are all listed as an attachment to this item, and most of these have been approved through collective bargaining prior to this item coming before you tonight. Approval is required anytime we make changes to the salary within the city. In addition, the state legislation requires that in regards to local agency executives, you shall receive an oral report on the changes in salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits. And so I'm here to give you that report tonight. Since you last approved the salary schedule, the following changes have occurred to executive staff positions. Effective September first, two thousand and nineteen, all contract employees received contracted dentums, requiring them to begin paying twenty percent of their dental and vision premiums. On July first, two thousand and nineteen, the city manager and the assistant city attorney received a two point five percent salary increase with no changes to fringe benefits. The assistant city manager, human resources director, received a three percent salary increase with no changes to fringe benefits. The police chief, fire chief, community development director, city clerk, and library director received five percent salary increases with no changes to fringe benefits. The city attorney received a six percent salary increase with no changes to fringe benefits. And the director of environmental and water resources and the director of public works received seven percent salary increases with no changes to fringe benefits. On October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the director of Parks and Recreation received a salary increase of four percent with no changes to fringe benefits. You've had three promotions during this time, a promotion to fill the director of finance position, a promotion of the communications manager to communications director with a five percent salary increase, and you also had a promotion to fill the administration support specialist. And finally, both the legal secretary and the legal analyst positions received a two point five percent salary increase as of July first, two thousand and nineteen, with no changes to fringe benefits. Those were all of the changes to the executive positions since you last approved the salary schedule, and they were all in line with the other bargaining units. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Stacy?
I'll move the resolution. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for sticking around. I think that's it. Elaine, city manager report.
All right, good evening, everyone. The Folsom Public Library Building is again open to the public for grab-and-go services that started today. Grab-and-go is designed to let people make short, safe library visits, and since the health and safety of our community is our top priority, the library will look and feel a bit different when you come in, but you will still be able to get a library card, browse the library collection, pick up holds, use library computers and printers, use our free Wi-Fi, get personalized help from librarians, return library materials, and the Friends of the Folsom Library bookstore and donations will be open and available. Visits will be limited to one hour, and the number of library guests will be limited to ensure safe social distancing. It'll be about fifty or so at a time in the building, and face coverings are required at all times when you're inside the library. As you all are very aware, smoke from Northern California wildfires is causing very poor air quality currently in the Sacramento region, including in Folsom. Residents should stay indoors whenever possible. The following City of Folsom facilities are temporarily closed, the Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary, Curbside Library Services, the Steve Miklos Aquatic Center, Cummings Family Skate and Bike Park, and sports conditioning, fitness, and recreational classes on City of Folsom Fields and outdoor facilities. Sutter Street will close to motorists on weekends through November first to allow restaurants and merchants in the historic district to expand and welcome more diners and shoppers outdoors in historic Folsom. Road closures will take place on weekends from two PM on Fridays until seven AM on Mondays. And finally, sign up for Folsom Parks and Recreation's annual Love My Mom Family Fitness Event and complete a five K, which is three point one miles, at your convenience in any location at any time between now and September thirteenth, twenty twenty. You can find out more at folsom.ca.us to learn more. And actually, one, one final, finally, a shout-out to our Vice Mayor Ernie Sheldon, who is not here, not able to be here tonight, as he is not feeling well, but I believe he is watching right now, and so feel better, Ernie, our thoughts are with you.
Thank you very much. Carrie?
Yes, Ernie, we're thinking about you and hoping that you're feeling much better really soon. Great tribute to Ernie in the, in the Telegraph this past week. If you haven't seen it, I strongly encourage you to read that. I was out driving around in the last couple of days, and my, I like never leave the bubble ever anymore, but I cannot tell you how many vehicles I am seeing that are not stopping at stop signs. We had a fire department vehicle hit a couple of days ago, there's been some really bad accidents. We install signals at certain locations because we have high traffic volumes there. So if the light's going to turn red for you, it means someone's coming in the other direction. So if you run the light, either they're going to hit you, or you're going to hit them, and it's going to ruin your day. So if you're five minutes late for something, you should have left earlier, running the light is not going to make your day any better. And police department has been out in force. It's almost as if, maybe because there's not as many people driving, I'm noticing more and more police cars everywhere I go, but they are out there, and if you don't get in an accident, you're going to get a ticket. Whatever happens, it's not going to make your day any better. So please, just, when the light's turning yellow, put your foot on the brake, slow down, and listen to the song on the radio. You'll get there safe and sound, even if it's a minute later. So please, just drive careful. And the, the smoke today was ridiculous. It was, it was really nice this morning, whatever, whichever way the breeze was blowing, it seemed to blow it away, and then the snap of a finger, you couldn't see outside.
We reached the mid four hundreds on the air quality index today.
It went from something like a hundred and thirty to four sixteen.
Just shot up, yeah.
In a matter of an hour. So please stay safe, people.
Thank you. Mike?
Just, just one quick thing. I, I was reflecting, as I was reading the, the new operations plan from the fire department, that this week, we had, you know, a demonstration of the extraordinary work that our firefighters do and our fire department has put together. And last meeting, we had, you know, a reminder of how extraordinary our police department is. And given all of the turmoil in the world, it's just, I hope everybody really takes to heart how extremely fortunate we are to have those two particular sets of people working for us and a great city staff from top to bottom. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. And I will scold everybody just a little bit to please pick up after your dogs, because I walk the trail along that parallels Big Valley Road almost every morning, and there's a lot of landmines on it lately.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, just reporting out, you know, as, as you graciously appointed me to the Sacramento Cable Commission, there was immediately a meeting that, Krista, thank you for coordinating, getting me reconnected with the commission there. The only item there of real importance was just passing the budget, which occurred a little later. little later than normal, their meetings, and all that means for the city of Folsom is kind of the pass-through proportionment of the cable fees, which ended up being about expected about $500,000. But just as importantly, out of some of these fees are usually annual upgrades to our council chambers here, and there was about $160,000 approved and budgeted for, and I believe some of it has to do with some remote monitors in the hallway, just to kind of help accommodate the COVID environment, and then-
Which oddly, they're not on out there tonight, they normally are.
Yeah, so, and then, and then part of that was upgrades to the recording system that the Metro Cable 14 has as well. So, so pretty routine stuff. The only other piece there is, the licensing has switched from county to state, which just, the question is, does the commission even need to exist in the future? And I think we all agree that it did. It's set to expire in 2024, but I'm sure we'll continue a life beyond that. So, some lucky person at this dais will have the fortunate pleasure of, and it is a good group of people, so, but was happy to step in, and there'll be another meeting early December that'll sit in as well. And with that, oh, one other thing, I also look forward to hearing from our Vice Mayor, Ernie Sheldon, at our next meeting. So, get well, Ernie.
Very nice. And I don't have any comments, it's 9:21, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.